Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting in September. Welcome back from the summer. It's good to see everyone. And we'll get started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 30th, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. And could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. Okay. So now we're moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite Henry Bassman from the American Legion and Rick Wolf from the Elks, please, to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Lastly, unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we're on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular and closed-session meeting minutes of July 26 and the special closed-session meeting of August 10?
Moved.
Moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I was not at July 26.
Okay, so you'll abstain from the 26th.
Yes.
Okay. So, and anyone opposed, motion carries? So we'll move on to two reports. So first-
Would you speak up louder or take your mask off? I can't understand. What motion was passed?
To approve the minutes.
Please speak louder or take your mask off.
Fine. Okay. All right. So we're moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Happy first day of school to Summit students, teachers, and parents. Council and I wish you a great year ahead. We hope that you will stay safe this week and throughout the school year with safety tips from the Summit Police Department that are posted on the city and police social media channels and the city website. The popular Fall in Love with Trees series from the City of Summit Shade Tree Advisory Committee and Reeves Reed Arboretum is returning for fall 2022. This free, three-part series on preserving historic and significant trees will be held online and in person at the arboretum on September 22nd, October 6th, and October 20th. More information is available at reevesreedarboretum.org. The Summit Police Department and AAA are hosting a bicycle rodeo on Saturday, September 10th, from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. at Brayton Elementary School, which is located at 89 Tulip Street in Summit. This free event is open to Summit residents in grades K through 12. Representatives from Trek Bicycle in Summit will perform safety inspections on bicycles and equipment at the event. Representatives from AAA will provide a safety presentation to all attendees and will set up an obstacle course for riders to navigate. Registration for this event is required, and attendance is limited to 30 participants. Please go to cityofsummit.org/polic for more information. The County of Union, New Jersey Board of Elections is seeking poll workers during early voting for the November general election. Early voting will take place beginning on Saturday, October 29th, through Sunday, November 6th. The general election will take place on Tuesday, November 8th. The application for these paid positions is available on the Union County website, And lastly, I hope you all had a very nice summer. Council has been taking a vacation a little bit, each of us, but also working. And we will be talking, you'll see if you've looked at the agenda, that there'll be an ordinance tonight, a resolution setting up a real estate financial advisory committee to help provide advice on the financial aspects of the Broad Street West redevelopment project. Another decision that council has come to is because there was so much concern and dismay about the development to occur on the parking lot between the library and the Y, we will be proposing an ordinance to remove that section of the redevelopment from the project. We specifically are doing that because we want you to understand and believe that we have listened, and we're not just saying we're not going to do it now. We're saying we're taking it out of redevelopment altogether, so that we need all of us to listen to each other and work together. So that's all I have to say about that now, and I'm glad so many folks are here. And one of my favorite things to do, which I'll do in a little bit, is to deliver a proclamation. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now we'll move on to the city administrator, Michael Rogers, for his report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to take a few minutes to update, to provide an update on the Broad Street West redevelopment work since the last council meeting on July 26. As I, we communicated to the public in August, the council has directed the redevelopers to present a revised project design that is compliant with the redevelopment plan. Specifically, the design of any building should not be taller than four stories and comprised of either one or two buildings, and include adequate parking on site. And we have advised the redevelopers as well to be, to complete whatever work they need in order to better inform the public on traffic, parking, and the financials, of course. The city has mailed a postcard, and I'll get into the status of that, to every household in Summit about Broad Street West, asking to visit cityofsummit.org/BSW for official information on the project, and has made resources and assistance available to those residents who are not on the Internet. Apparently, the postcard was dropped at the U.S. Post Office in Carney over two weeks ago, and I just heard today that many residents still have not received this card. We are looking into this issue and hope everyone receives it soon. It was my understanding that the mail was dropped at this particular large distribution and processes in Carney in order to obtain the cheapest bulk rate. So this is what we get for trying to save some money. But that's the status. So we're trying to get some answers, and hopefully this will, you'll reach your mailbox soon. So tonight, council will vote on a resolution appointing a new professional financial advisor who is familiar with Summit's finances and the redevelopment process, and on a resolution to create a Broad Street West Redevelopment Advisory Committee. The advisory committee application process and requisites qualifications will be publicized tomorrow by news release. Starting tomorrow, September 7th, the city will accept, will be accepting, applications from residents with relevant financial expertise who are interested in serving. After the application period closes, which we encourage anyone interested to submit their application within the next two weeks, Mayor Ades and members of the common council will review the applications, and members of the advisory committee will be appointed at the October 6th council meeting. After volunteer members have been appointed to the new advisory committee, we anticipate that the city redevelopment planners will present on the development process and how the community will be further engaged. This will likely happen at the October 18th council meeting, possibly the 6th, but I think it will be the 18th. Information about the upcoming presentation will be posted on the city website once we have a definitive date. In addition to the Broad Street West Redevelopment Advisory Committee, as we communicated to the public, council will engage the city's volunteer advisory committees that are comprised of city residents with subject matter expertise. This will include the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission Affordable Housing Committee, the Housing Authority Board, Environmental Commissions, Summit Parking Advisory Committee, Economic Advisory Committee, and Summit Downtown, to advise within their areas of expertise. And I will just end with this statement. As we move on with this project, our goal is to build consensus in a project that will benefit this community. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a few items as well. First of all, celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month with the Summit Department of Community Programs at Fiesta Latina on Friday, September 16th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the Village Green. The event will feature musical and dance performances, food trucks, and other cultural demonstrations. Community and cultural groups should contact David Guida at dguida@cityofsummit.org or at 908-277-2932 to sign up to host a table at the event or to become a sponsor. More information is available at summitcommunityprograms.com. The next Summit Free Market event is this Saturday, September 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the transfer station located at 40 New Providence Avenue. Stop by to drop off yard sale quality items and browse other donated items for free. More available, more information is available at www.summitfreemarket.org. And finally, the annual doggie dip event with the Summit Department of Community Programs will take place on Saturday, September 24th, at the Summit Family Aquatic Center located at 100 Ashwood Avenue. The fee to attend is $5 per dog for Summit residents and $10 per dog for non-residents. Interested participants should register online at summitcommunityprograms.com, private to the event. And all dogs must be over six months old. So the mayor and I will have to wait till next year to take our puppies to this event, but I'm looking forward to it, Mayor.
Absolutely. Next year.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to presentations. So our first presentation this evening, oh, is the Sarah Melanial Award of Proclamation. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. May I ask John Stoughton, and is John Christman here? No. John, I know you're coming, but I, my list said-
The floor is over.
Okay. Perfect. One of my favorite groups of people who live in this town. We, or we're just so blessed to have all of you here, so, and work so hard for us all the time diligently. Whereas health and safety are paramount to a sound community, and whereas since July 28, 1962, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have provided a vital public service to our community in support of health and safety, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have given an untold number of hours of service to Summit residents and patrons of our businesses and medical institutions, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad answered more than 2,200 emergency calls for help last year from Summit residents, visitors, and from surrounding communities in need of mutual aid support, and whereas Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have responded to emergencies of all types, all hours of the day and night, and whereas in addition to 911 emergency calls, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members regularly provide non-emergency coverage at many community events, and whereas the efforts of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members, all of whom are volunteers, should not go unrecognized, and whereas the dedication and hard work of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members provides quality care at no cost to the patient or taxpayer, saving the City of Summit approximately $2 million per year. Now therefore, I nor a ratist mayor of the City of Summit do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad Month in the City of Summit in recognition of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad and the importance of all the good deeds contributed by its many volunteers for 60 years. And I ask all citizens to join me in praising these volunteers and lending the squad your financial support. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this sixth day of September in the year 2022. [applause] And may I just add, I'm sure you've seen the signs posted around town about join Summit EMS, and that's because they're all volunteers. Everybody's busy. We all have our jobs and our personal lives, but you need to keep volunteering. I'm delighted to see young people here. We need to continue. So if you know of anyone who's interested in being on the squad, encourage them to join. And that's my one pitch. The other is, it's a volunteer group, as you know, with no city financial support. Whether we like it or not, the squad probably ends up at our homes at some point in our lives, and we need them, and we need to support them. So, you know, pull out your checkbook and send them a check and contribute, because they contribute so much of their time and effort. Is there anything you want to say, John?
I just wanted to thank the members of council, and particularly Nora, for their support over the years. Nora has been one of the greatest cheerleaders for the squad for the last seven years now. So thank you. So on behalf of our 80 volunteers, you know, the hundreds whom we serve every year, thank you for that. I was going to give my typical elevator pitch that the reason we do First Aid Squad Month in September is because it's the month that our fund drive launches, but Nora just did a great job of doing that, so I won't reiterate that. I will remind everybody, others, with any organization, there's three things that make the organization like ours work. The three M's, I call it. Money, members, and motivation. We've got the motivation. You know, money is always something we can always use, and, you know, as we get older, I've been doing this for 30 years, we're always looking for the next generation to take over, so we always are looking for members. You know, the hiring sign is out. Feel free to give us a call. Visit our website, summitems.org, if you're interested in learning more about the organization, if you're interested in becoming a volunteer, either as an EMT or in some of the other things, we, some of the administrative backend things that support us as well, and of course, you know, supporting financially our great cause. Thank you all.
If all the squad members can come forward, then we'll do a group picture. That's fine. No problem.
Isn't that time to change? I'm gonna stand at the back.
You look professional. It's okay.
What's up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you to all the squad members for their volunteer efforts. We really appreciate it. So with that, we'll move on now to our first presentation of the evening, which is the Veterans Memorial Monument Project. And we've got Henry Bassman, the former commander of the American Legion post, and Rick Wolf, the exalted leader of the Summit Elks Lodge, to present this evening. So come on up, please.
Sure.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. When we first presented to you, we said that you passed a resolution. We said that we would brief you from time to time on the progress of the project, and that's what we're doing tonight. And we'll make it as fast as possible, because I know you've got a very busy agenda. The joint project of Elks Lodge, Lindsay Street Post, and the City of Summit initially agreed on several items that we would work on. One we did not mention at that time, because it did not become apparent, was that the 60-foot flagpole, which you can see here, may be in need of replacement or repair. And subsequent to our initial planning, we thought it would be appropriate to put up as a backdrop six flags representing the different services. This is a picture of the bottom of the flagpole. It was originally erected in 1917 at another location and moved to the Monument Park in 1961.
Aaron Schreger, do you want to mention what's going on?
Absolutely. We evaluated. It's becoming a little bit tired. It does need either replacement or refurbishment, so, which is somewhat, for just really a foundation and a pole, it's kind of a major project. Unfortunately, you know, aluminum poles are not easy to come by now with material shortages, so it's nothing quick. The good part is wherever, whether this is replaced in kind or relocated, it won't impact our monument project right now, so we can work around that, so it won't hold this up. But we are looking at that. It is a 100-year-old flagpole, and we're happy to work with that. And they have mentioned possibility for fundraising, because for something relatively simple, they tend to cost a little bit of money, so we're working with them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger.
This is what Monument Park looked like before we started working on it, just to refresh your memory. As we progressed with the demolition of the brick monument, we found that there was a greater need for repair than we anticipated. This is the bottom of one of the tired wooden benches. You can see the holes made there by carpenter bees. This is the monument. Again, it looks a little tired, but when it was begun to be demolished, you can see that the steel supports and the bricks had deteriorated. This is a close-up. You can see how the mortar has turned to sand, and it would have needed extensive repair in a very short time. This is one of the workers from Public Works. They did a terrific job removing the nameplates. You can see nothing was bent or warped in the process. This is what the site looks like now. Mr. Schreger tells me that within a couple of weeks, the futtings will probably start to be put in. This is the replacement for the World War II Korea-Vietnam monument. This is a close-up of the graphics. We chose a montage that represented the three wars. From left to right, the USS New Jersey is firing a salvo. You can see troops landing at Omaha Beach in World War II and Normandy. The man standing has got a Tommy gun. This picture was taken in Okinawa, one of the bloodiest battles in World War II. The men marching toward us represent the march out of the Chosin Reservoir, which was very significant in the Korean War. And the photo on the right is an air assault, very typical of what was done in Vietnam, F-4 flights, F-4 fighter planes above them, and World War II-era planes above the New Jersey. The back of the monument will represent the people who served in World War II Korea and Vietnam. The soldier, the man on the left could be a soldier or Marine, next a sailor, next an airman of the era. The fourth man is a Korean-era soldier, and the fifth is a Vietnam-era soldier or Marine. This is the Global War on Terror monument. The graphics are two soldiers or Marines advancing from a Black Hawk helicopter, and above them, the inscription reads, "Honoring those who served and their families." And you can see the six seals of the current armed services, including the Space Force. This is the back of the monument. It shows all the locations in which troops were deployed in the Global War on Terror. We thought it would be important that people remembered that, you know, that next generations won't be as familiar as we are. This is an example of one of the benches, but the inscription is different. It will include the seal for the Elks, the seal for the American Legion, and the donors. This is the Medal of Honor monument, and I photoshopped it to show you what it will look like when the replica of the Medal of Honor is installed on top of the bronze plaque describing the action for which the two men from Summit were awarded the Medal of Honor. This is an impression of what the, what the area will look like when it's finished, and this impression does not show the renewed patio cement that's going to be placed there. The planned dedication now is November 10th of this year, 2023, and, is it 2023?
22.
22. Excuse me. It won't be a year from November. It'll be this November. I was making one mistake. And November 10th is a good day, because if we did it on the 11th, we would have trouble getting dignitaries to attend, because they're all committed years in advance. So there, as of August 30th, there were 211 individual contributors to this project. We're still doing fundraising, and Rick will discuss what's going on.
Thank you.
Henry put this presentation together. He asked me to review it, so I take full responsibility for the bad date, Henry. He sent it to me, and I said, "It looks great. Let's roll." And, but, you know, I think, I think just about everybody in this room has contributed to this project, and I thank you all. I think we set a goal of $85,000. We're about there, at $85,000. We're going to do one more, one more push to give everybody a last chance to get their names on the, on the, on the donor benches, and we'll make sure that that goes out with a lot of advance notice, so people, because I'm panicking that I'm going to spell somebody's name wrong, or somebody will want to change it, but that'll go out in advance with everybody who'll have a chance to review the names before they get engraved on the benches. But I think, as Henry also mentioned, we're going to, the fundraising has been, it's just been remarkable, sharing the stories of some of the Summit heroes that gave their lives for our country. But the money just poured in, and we, we were able to expand the project and put the additional graphics on the back of the monuments, and we're looking at adding the, as Henry mentioned, the six service flags for the, each of the military branches. So, but, we'd like to just, oh.
One of the things that Rick came up with was they identified some of the people-
Mr. Bassman, can you speak into the microphone, please?
One of the things that Rick came up with was identification of some of the people who are on the World War II Korea-Vietnam monument, and he got their bios together, and it made this come to life. These are people who lived in Summit. Their homes still exist. We know where they lived, and it, it makes this more than a name. It makes them people. And Michael and Amador, Amadaya, Amador, Amade Spadone, they were brothers, and they both died in World War II. This young man died in Korea. He was an aviator, Roland Russell Batson Jr. And this young man, William Francisco, died in Vietnam. You'll notice he won a Silver Star, which is the third highest award for valor. Any questions or comments?
Let me open it up to council members first. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you so much for all your work on this project. This is very exciting, and I think- Councilmember Allen, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm laughing because Pat's name isn't on there. So I need to add his.
Okay. Are there any-
That was in Earl, oh, Pat, Pat Ho.
My husband.
Her husband.
Oh, really?
It's not my name, but not his.
I'm wondering about the same for me. Okay.
We can fix that.
All right. All right. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Questions from members of the public?
Your presentation, I'll put that down.
Okay.
Here's one.
Medal of Honor.
I'm sorry?
Medal of Honor.
Come on up, please.
Two men in World War I. Two men in World War I. Eggers, Alan Eggers, was a sergeant, and the second was O'Shea, Thomas O'Shea. There are streets named after each of them in Summit. They were in one of the most significant battles of the First World War, and it was the first breach of the German lines into Belgium, and the American troops were the first assault troops, and the assault disintegrated because the troops to the right or to the left of them did not make the same advance. Eggers and O'Shea were caught in front of the American lines. They heard, they were in a ditch, and they heard calls for help from a disabled tank. They ran to the tank, along with a man from Rutherford, and O'Shea was killed immediately. They got to the tank, they saved an officer and four enlisted men, brought them back to the shell hull, and then went back to the tank, retrieved a machine gun, and used it to keep the Germans off for the rest of the day. Under cover of night, they retreated back to the American lines. Really an amazing story. Really an amazing story.
Thank you for sharing that story. We have a lot of people to be thankful for, and thank you so much for all your work on this. Okay, so with that, we will move on to our second presentation of the evening, which will be a Parkline update from our Director of the Department of Community Services, Erin Schreger, and also Jay Brinkerhoff from the Parkline Foundation. And as folks may have noticed, there's some work starting over on Morris Avenue. So come on up and please let us know what's going on.
Certainly. Okay. Good evening. I wanted to provide a brief update on the Parkline because between now and the next meeting, things are moving rather quickly. Even though the Bridge project was awarded last year due to supply and material pandemic shortages, it's really just getting underway now. So you will see a lot. So I'd like to just give an update on what's happening and the path forward as questions will definitely come up as work progresses. This is, I prepared a few slides I wasn't going to initially. Summit Parkland, that's the view from the beginning part, kind of near the Overlook Hospital condominium parking there near Broad Street. Real quick, having been up there quite a bit over the last few weeks, and this park will be fascinating rail trail and a great linear park. It is historic, and I just think it's neat, these old slides from the original presentation, just to see, especially the train crossing over the Ashwood over there and just some of the history there. I won't go into that. You could Google Raway Valley Railroad. But, you know, it's a lot more than just garbage and old railroad ties up there, which is pretty neat. So going back to like 2016, pretty much what you see on these photos is what was there. A lot of overgrowth, some fencing, some debris, the old railroad ties, some of the track itself, and really nothing to write home about. We've taken a phased approach to the development of it, and these phases don't necessarily go along. I think at one point, it was just referred to as three. As it's progressing, it's been kind of split up to make a little more sense just from a constructibility point of view. With Phase 1, which is essentially completed, was the path just between Broad and Morris. There's still beautification going on, ongoing maintenance, but that is done. And the offshoot trail that goes up to Upper Overlook Drive there, her road. Phase 1A then is really this bridge that's under construction right now, which is a pedestrian bridge across Morris Avenue. Phase 2 will be the Henry Street portion, where there will be fencing and landscape buffers put in in anticipation of what would be Phase 3. Phase 3 would then be the two bridges over Ashwood and Russell, which become a little easier, but a little harder as well because the bridge structure is still there. But we can't just throw plywood on it and call that a bridge. So there'll have to be some engineering designs done to convert those, much like they've done on the High Line or the bridge over the Hudson up by Poughkeepsie. And then Phase 4 would be the phase essentially from Russell through former BMS, now called Onyx Site, and then into the county property over to Bryant Park. Still discussions on will they be able to go through that property or around it? There's plans for either way. That's a little ways off, but we'll keep looking forward to a solution there. Phase is just really details what I just spoke about. Phase 1 photos, for those who haven't been to the Parkline, I mean, it's a lot going on there. Did pretty well even with the drought. There's still a lot of plants there and wildlife up there, so worth a visit if you haven't been there. And then this is Phase 1A, which is actively happening almost overnight. It kind of took off pretty quickly. But on the top left, you're looking at what would be the more southern abutment on Morris Avenue. That's the one getting the most work right now. And towards the right is showing just a different view of that abutment from the north side. The bottom lift shows the walls with the tie rods because the bridge will be higher than what was there previously, about three feet higher. It will have 17-foot clearance over Morris Avenue. Knocking wood, nothing should get stuck under that. Most things are below 14 feet, but it will be 17 feet. And bottom right, you just see like all the detail that goes into just, you know, what might be deemed a minor pedestrian bridge. There's a lot of concrete and steel going into this, so. So next steps moving forward to continue and maintain and improve Phase 1, the first part that's done, and then Phase 1, the bridge installation. So right now, the bridge is scheduled to be finished October 20th. But before we put that on our calendar, there's a lot of utilities in the way. So we're kind of at the mercy of utilities. We are working with them. We have them lined up, but it's still, we know how it goes with utilities. And there's several of them in the way, and they're all generally not your main ones. It's the fiber optics that have to be moved. So that would be ultimately the critical path. But the bridge will be completed mid-October. The privacy and landscaping along Phase 2, Henry Street, so we'll have a final plan that will circulate very shortly, definitely by mid-October, but probably sooner. We had done, the mock-up was done over there at one point just with fencing and some plantings. And then hopefully, starting fencing and then planting in the fall through next year. Planting depends, obviously, on how everything progresses. Phase 3 with the bridges, we are in the process of obtaining proposals from engineering firms to convert those bridges with hopes that by early next year, we'll have plans to review and submit for construction and possible construction next summer. A lot depends on funding, but we believe at least we could get to bid in time for next summer. And then the Phase 4 is just through the, you know, the former BMS, Onyx Property, to the county land. We'll keep discussing with the property owners in the county layout maybe in 2023 and construction 24. There's a lot less work over there. There's no bridges, and that'll probably just become a wooded path there. But we'll see as that progresses. So that was the brief update we have.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. And Mr. Brinkerhoff, did you have anything to add?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So are there any questions from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Director Schreger, for the update. Thank you, Jay, for being here. I think people will remember I started pretty skeptical. I liked the concept. I was very worried about the ability to fundraise. I was very worried about the privacy on Henry Street and Ashwood and Morris and Russell and Eggers. And I was very worried about the safety. But credit where it's due, the Parkline Foundation, I think, has done really a great job over the last several years of checking off all those boxes and sort of alleviating personally my concerns about these things. So just a couple of quick questions that I think will also be reminders. No city funds have been spent on this, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then when the privacy plan, I remember it being, you know, basically fences with landscaping. When that privacy plan is finalized, how will it be communicated to the folks who live on Ashwood Ave, Russell Place, Eggers Court, and Henry Street?
We would, once it's finalized, it'll go per the agreement to the committee first, CAPS Committee.
Okay.
Then to council, and then we would submit it. We're happy to invite them to that meeting, or if not, at least send it to them in advance just for discussion. I would like to send it to them and tell them when it would be presented, and then they can come see it then.
Okay. And then construction of the Habitat project that's right next door and construction of the bridge can be happening simultaneously. One doesn't need to wait for the other, right?
There, we're working together. But yes, there's two significant projects, both which will have a crane on different dates. But as of right now, we're staying out of each other's way and working together.
Great.
But we will be kind of on the same timing for when our bridge arrives and their modular houses arrive, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. Those are my three things.
And Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Director Schreger. Thank you, Jay, for being here. Just the bridge installation, it seems like an amazing kind of thing that they're going to do is bring a bridge in all in one piece. How long, how disruptive is that going to be to the traffic on Morris Avenue? And just talk about the process of installing that bridge.
Absolutely. The bridge itself, and we spoke at committee, is putting the bridge up is probably a 20-minute job. It shows up, no, it shows up on one flatbed truck. A crane will pick it up and put it down. But it's the preparation that they have getting everything in place, getting the crane set up, getting the crane balanced. Morris Avenue would be closed indefinitely for probably a good part of a day. Right now, in working with police, it will be a Saturday. Again, that's assuming late October. You know, it could change if it's a different season. But Morris Avenue would be closed. It would be a Saturday. Fully at that, from Glenn Side probably back to Denman or Ashwood while they do this. And it would be a full day of closure there. And detours would be in place. The plan set did have an approved detour plan. It was either do it at night, which is always, has its challenges as well and disruptive to the neighborhood, or just do a Saturday where it's lesser traffic. There will be some disruption, but we'll have a detour in place.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Director Schreger, and thank you, Jay, who gave me a wonderful tour. And you'll remember all of my childhood memories I was going through, walking across that bridge unbeknownst to my mom, that my brother. My brother's there. That's right. I was on my brother's shoulder. He was carrying me to church through a shortcut. So I am delighted. I'm absolutely delighted to see the progress that's being made. And I wanted to hear if Onyx is being as generous and as cooperative as BMS was. I know they were instrumental in the fundraising, and I was hoping that that's happening with this new company that's taking over there.
I've had, perhaps, Jay, can you speak more? I haven't had any discussions myself at this point. But Jay, if you have any, you could brief them on it. That would be great.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Yes, I've had several conversations with Representatives Onyx. They are very excited about the project, pardon me, because they. They're excited about the project because they see it as a wonderful amenity for their development. It obviously would enable people, both employees and visitors, to walk to downtown, which is one of the primary reasons for building this. So while employees of BMS would have that option as well, Onyx is the development company, and they are looking to attract users. They want to build buildings for prospective users, tenants or owners. And they have included in their materials, let me put it that way. They've been very generous with us. We likewise have been working with them as much as we can. So when we get to their, to their portion of the trail, I expect them confident they will help us through their portion of the trail.
That's terrific to hear. Great example of a private-public partnership.
Exactly.
The one idea I would put on your radar if you haven't already, and the superintendent might be mad at me for adding to their plate, but it just seems like a wonderful opportunity for the Jefferson School community to have some involvement with that nature. And so I hope that there's a possibility in mind to get Jefferson involved.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be, we'll contact them. Happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. I don't want to belabor the thank yous, but as a previous Board of Trustee member, I just want to say that I had been to council meetings and advocating for the Parkline. So I'm incredibly excited that this is happening. And it couldn't have happened, one, without enormous generosity from community members donating to the foundation, but also Director Schreger with you partnering with the members, Councilman Rabino, who had the vision to believe that this could happen and the drive to put the right people on the team and work with people like Jay Brinkerhoff, who were able to execute. And there's many people that can certainly be thanked along the way. So I'm excited to see this happen. And one little thing that I'd like to put on there is make sure the greenery, because I think the biggest catch was the screening, make sure the greenery is drought resistant, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Any other questions? So I did have one for you, Director Schreger. There have been some concerns about the bridge opening up and the fencing happening on Henry Street after that. But how is that going to be addressed?
Well, the current plans right now is there will be a gate, so there won't be access to Henry Street. So the bridge, this bridge will also have a stairwell going down to Morris Avenue.
Okay.
So it will create somewhat of a loop. The engineering division will make a trail map, so to speak, to kind of make it loop around up to, even up by Glenn Side and then cutting back through the hospital. So this project itself, when it's done, will gate right at the bridge until we have it secure along Henry Street right there. So they're working hand-to-hand. It's a separate contractor that we would get to do the planting and the fencing. We're trying to get quotes in the plan now. Ideally, it would be done at the same time. We wouldn't have to leave a gate, but if not, it would be gated off. So once you cross the bridge, you don't go over there until that's all in place.
And will the same thing happen with Ashwood and Russell with the bridges and the, so those won't be accessible till the privacy fencing is done in those areas as well?
Correct, yes.
And I just wanted to clarify, you will be coming to council meetings to present so there'll be an opportunity for residents to come and talk about each part of the privacy fence planting scheme?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And will residents of those streets be notified so they'll have an opportunity to come?
We'll notify the abutting properties, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Questions from members of the public? Come on up, Ms. Hamlet.
Hi, good evening. President Fox, Madam Mayor, Rest of Common Council. Thanks for being here tonight after our long break. I just had a couple of questions about, as I am running for Ward 1 against my friend Danny here. And I just had some questions around, I think, Greg, you bring up a good question about how do we communicate with the residents? And I think, Ms. Fox, you bring up a good point as far as communicating the fencing issues. But what I'm hearing from the residents is they don't understand how to learn more about this project. So if I might make a recommendation, Erin, I think it might be a good idea to put a QR code near the bridge with all of this information because by the time we communicate to them, it's too late, and they're frustrated over, like I've seen and talked to them, and they just don't understand why there's not progress. And we're all here tonight, so we understand all of that. But they don't understand. So to the questions that kind of Mr. Vartan had mentioned, I think if we just put a QR code with this information, it would solve a lot of chaos and questions and things like that. And I think, if I could mention one other thing, I think there's a lot of residents that just don't understand what Onyx is. I actually heard it in the back here. If you're paying attention, you understand what it is. But when I'm speaking with residents, they just don't understand, and they're in that area. So maybe we could even put a QR code somewhere around there so that they could be informed because they're just, they might not have the time to come here or the capacity. And I think that those QR codes should be in Spanish and English, if I could make that recommendation. But you might already be doing that. I don't know. Just a recommendation.
Well, actually, if it drives you to the city's website, everything can be translated on the city's website from Spanish to English.
So it does translate from Spanish to English. But for instance, to give you an example for tonight, the web works well in Spanish to English until you get to the minutes, and then it's only in English.
Okay.
So I think that that's sort of part of the problem.
Okay.
Like, it's a Google translator. So if, for instance, if I was to go on as a Spanish resident, Spanish-speaking resident, and I was to click on the Spanish-speaking portion of that, when you get to the agenda minutes, they're actually not in Spanish.
Okay.
So just a recommendation. I'm hearing the residents frustrations over.
And I do think we need to just look into, before we go putting up a QR code to a private corporation.
For sure.
We make sure that that's something that's a municipality.
I haven't, yeah, I haven't heard too much about Onyx, but I know for the bridge, people are.
It's a developer, and it's a developer.
Right. But people are confused around why the bridge is stalling. And we're all here tonight, and we all know why it's stalling. You said it's going to be done by October 21st. I'll hold you to the 20 minutes. I ran a platoon of stevedores, so I'll hold you to that. But just a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Through you, Council President, I don't think the bridge has stalled, right? Erin, I think we're just getting an update on where we are, right? And then the second thing is, sorry, you don't have to. It's not the responsibility of city government to be a news source, right? Like, there's news articles that are written about development, right? So if a private property owner sells their property to another private property owner, that was written about in the news, right? Like, and I don't, I think we want to just be very careful as a city about going, trying to balance between reporting what's news from the city organization and separating what's news that's just sort of general out there. And I think, you know, this Onyx, you know, purchasing the BMS property is something they had the right to do, and it's something that they're, you know, it's something that was reported on, and I don't know that that's the responsibility. was reported on and I don't know that that's the responsibility of the city communications office to put out when we have so many other initiatives that we're doing. So I just want to make sure we're balancing that and being careful about it.
Thank you Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you.
It's a good point. Did you want to say anything else, Director Schrager?
No, I'll reconvene with the CAPS committee on Monday just to discuss this. I think there was signage up on the fencing. Was Park Line signage?
Yeah, I did see some.
The fencing is now gone, so indefinitely there's no signs up there. So putting a new sign up, either directing to a webpage or a QR code or with some information, I think that's reasonable. I think it would be a good way to get information out there.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right, are there any other questions or comments from members of the public? Ms. Gagnon, come on up.
Hi, good evening. Dory Gagnon, 27 in Bedford. Mr. Schrager, can I see the map of where that is going again? Can you pull that back up on your sides for a second? So I'm not familiar with the Park Line, so this is really informative for me, but I do visit Glen Side a lot. And when I come up there by Overlook, I'm looking right at the entrance to the Park Line and that hill is pretty ugly with all of the shrubbery that's dead. Is that Park Line now own that side or is that municipality?
No, that's Overlook, actually.
Oh, that's Overlook owns that?
Yes.
Okay, so we can call Overlook. Because I didn't know if that was something that we could do to beautify that area because it's like when you come into Summit, that's really ugly. And maybe that's something we can talk to Overlook about of saying like, can we do something to address this?
We have, yes.
Oh.
But if residents want to do it?
We can talk to them.
Yep.
Okay, so then, so looking at this, this ends up at Bryant Park. Where is this, right at the circle area Bryant Park or is that like down by the muck of Bryant Park?
It's, so if you take Orchard Street out of the city, just as you get to, as you get to the Springfield border, you'll see the abutments from where the the bridge would be. That's where it would end right there.
Okay, so.
So really on the far east side of it.
Bryant Park.
So you actually cross Orchard Street to get into Bryant Park, correct?
Yes, you would have to.
At the ground level, not, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that brings me to the Bryant Park. Can you, anybody give us a quick little update? Three seconds of update of Bryant Park? Director Schrager, I think.
It's not the time. It's not the time.
You know what, let's, it's not worth, do you want to just do?
Just three seconds. That's all I'm asking.
I assume the pond?
Yes.
Pond is still bogged down in permitting at NJDEP. The county is fully ready to start their work. It did get held up in the historic review through DEP because it is in Olmsted Park. It's historic. And I know the county is calling at least twice a week and it's just DEP is holding up the permits, so.
So as soon as the permits are issued, the work will begin?
You can see that the equipment shed is built, there's electricity to it, the contractors line up, it's just the need for these permits, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other questions about the Park Line from members of the public? Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you so much Director Schrager. Thank you so much Mr. Brinkerhoff.
You're welcome.
And we look forward to seeing the bridge.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the hard work. Okay, so we're now moving on to, let's see, I'll try to get my place on the agenda. Okay, our favorite time of the night, it's public comment time. So if anyone has a comment, please come up. You have three minutes, state your name and address. And if you have a prepared statement, please provide it to the clerk. Do we have any comments? Items not on the agenda. Items not on the agenda. Okay, I'm taking that as a no. So I'm going to close the public comment period and we'll move on to ordinances for hearing. All right.
I'm completely confused. I'm here about this, the resolution to establish an advisory committee on this project and there has not been a resolution that has been put to the members. That's why we're here.
Okay, I'll explain what's going on then. So what's happening is we have an agenda. You can see where it is on the agenda, you can follow along. If you don't have one, you can get one right outside. Okay, right? Okay, so after public comment, there are ordinances for hearing, that's where we are. When we get to the resolution, then you will have an opportunity to comment.
I'll comment.
Nope, you're fine.
I'll shut up.
Okay, so when we get there, I'll let you know and you can comment, okay? All right, so we're going to move on now to ordinances for hearing and we have two safety and health ordinances. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first one?
Ordinance number 22-3263, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-10, One-Way Streets of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little, would you like to introduce, please?
Thank you Council President. This ordinance is to amend the traffic section referenced by the clerk in order to designate the entire length of Hobart Road as a one-way street. It will be a one-way street going along this entire length. This was noticed to the residents, there were no objections among any of the residents on Hobart Road and the police have requested this one-way designation in order to improve vehicular traffic flow and safety along that road because it's quite narrow and it's difficult for two cars to pass. So we are asked that we open this ordinance for hearing at this time.
A second. Okay, could we, let's see, we're opening it to, so we're opening the hearing? Does anyone, any member of council have a comment on this?
I do. Yeah, thank you Council President. I'm very happy about this. You know, I run on that road quite a bit and it is extremely narrow. Two cars really can't pass safely. And then even if you run into two cars trying to pass each other while you're running your route, it is very dangerous and it's a windy road with blind spots. So this will make everybody safer and I'm very supportive of this.
Okay, any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing and we'll move on to our second ordinance for hearing, which is 22-3264. Madam Clerk?
Yes, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-11.2, Stop Intersections Designated of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little?
Thank you Council President. This ordinance is to amend the traffic section referenced by the clerk in order to install a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Canoe Brook in Hartley Road in both directions, north and south. So this was the result of several accidents happening at this intersection. So the police department did and the engineering department in conjunction did a study, a traffic study and a history, and they both deemed that it was appropriate to put a four-way stop sign at this intersection in order to help reduce the possibilities of motor vehicle accidents and to improve pedestrian safety in this area. It's also a school walking route. So I would like at this time to open this, the hearing on this ordinance.
A second. Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you Council President. I just want to say I support this ordinance because it relates to the strategic goals outlined in the master plan to better connect people and places. And it's part of an extensive effort to expand the three Es, education, enforcement and engineering. Since joining council, I've been thrilled to support several engineering initiatives, several four-way stops, more than a dozen rectangular flashing beacons, and of course the sidewalk installation and maintenance policy that has now been responsible for adding several new sidewalks around town. So I say keep them coming.
Thank you Councilmember Vartan. I too support this. This is a challenging intersection and I think this is a great improvement and I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with this one. Any other comments? Councilmember, Councilmember Hairston? I was going to say, oh Hairston.
I've been called worse.
I was putting your two names together.
Thank you Council President. I would like to ask Director Schrager, we were having some difficulties with the state in getting information or getting things passed. And I hear that with the pond and wonder with these traffic ordinances that are coming up, how is the state able to respond to you?
Through you Council President. So the good part about a great deal of traffic ordinances is that the state several years ago removed their need to approve these. The guidelines exist both on a federal and state level, which the municipality is required to follow, which is what we did in this one. So we did, you know, commissioned a study and it met the warrants for a stop sign. Stop signs cannot just be erected, you know, at will. There's a lot of steps to follow and there's quite a bit of liability if you do just put them up inappropriately. This intersection specifically was, you know, seven, eight years ago, we did look at this as consideration. It didn't meet the warrants at the time. Unfortunately, or you could say fortunately, things have changed to now it does meet the warrants and one of those was a history of accidents over the last few years that it now meets the warrants and it can be installed. So we are meeting the state, but the state gives us the power to approve stop signs without them.
Thank you.
Thank you Director Schrager. Councilmember Miniger?
Sure, thank you Council President. Quick, one more question for you, Erin. You had talked about the timing of the installation of the stop signs and then the timing of the revealing of the stop signs. Could you just go into that a little bit now that we're at this point?
Absolutely. So this ordinance, if passed, will be published on 18th, do I have that? Six, no.
Nine days from today.
Nine days from today, 16th. So the law will be effective on the 16th. Currently, all of these signs are up with black bags on them just to get people used to the idea of something's coming. So they see it and they start thinking about it. We'll work with police or Public Works and put up the message boards, you know, pending if this is approved tonight, which I hope it will be, just to start giving them a visual, you know, written heads up that this is coming. And then on that morning, it's officially the law then that we can have a stop sign there. DPW would just paint the stop bars and pull the bags after school commute hours. We don't want to make anything a little too chaotic that doesn't need to be. So midday that Thursday would be officially open.
Thank you Director Schrager. Councilmember Allen and then we'll go to you, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you Council President, through you. Actually, Councilwoman Hairston made me think of something. When you mentioned that it didn't warrant a stop sign before, I am for stop signs. You can almost put them on every corner for me. But what warrants it? So there's more, is it because there's more traffic that you're getting more accidents? Is it more walking because we're encouraging walking? What would you say is leading to specific stop signs warning, being warranted to be put in versus six years ago?
Yeah, absolutely, through you Council President. It is, we do have a stop sign and guideline and installation guideline. It is on the webpage, which is incredibly boring and highly technical. It just kind of details all the warrants. In this specific one, a lot of it is, especially when you do a four-way, just doing a regular stop sign, which might not exist on all, some of these cross streets, they're a little easier to put up because you're really just stopping a road that might naturally be stopping. When you have a four-way, that's when it gets a little trickier because the guidelines really want the traffic to be almost comparable. So it's really done where you have roads that have comparable traffic, which Canoe Brook is a dominating road there, so it doesn't meet that. But when you have accident history, when you're located within so many feet of a school property, which this one also meets that as well. And then there's other traffic studies that get into, you know, hourly rates at certain intersections that get applied. And this one did meet, and you only have to meet one of those, so.
Okay, and just to clarify, I'm sorry. So there's a higher volume of traffic that has led to this or it just happens to be that we're getting more accidents?
This one was the accidents definitely played a high, a big contributor to it meeting warrants now, so.
Okay, because of traffic, because there's more people coming through?
There was more crashes, sorry, yes.
Okay, but we don't know that's because there's more people coming through.
I don't think you can make that conclusion.
Yeah, no, the volumes, especially the volumes the last few years with the pandemic have kind of been, if anything, down a little.
Right.
But it's crashes and the new caveat that you can be within a school district or within a school property, so, which this one does meet Washington because it's close enough to the back end.
Okay, thank you Director Schrager. Councilmember Hairston?
So Council President, it was actually, my question was in regard to the previous ordinance, so I can wait until you introduce the final consideration?
We can't, no. Once I close the hearing, it's closed, so.
Well, I can ask it in a way that Director Schrager will be able to answer.
Matt? I think we, we need a little guidance here. Okay, so Councilmember Hairston has a question about the previous here, the item, the ordinance on the previous hearing, which we've since closed.
You can ask a question on it. The hearing is closed, you can still ask some questions.
Okay, thank you.
And I can ask it, I can ask it in a way, because the one thing I am interested in hearing, your experience with how long it takes for people to adjust to this new traffic pattern, and in particular about a one-way street. You'll have folks who are routinely coming the other way. So that's what I wanted to ask about Hobart Road, but I know you're going to be putting a four-way stop and hearing, if, that's why I said I can have it applied to the second one. But I'm most interested in how your experience with how quickly people who come the other way, what's your, what's your experience with that?
Yes, and again, through you Council President. The, for a one-way street, especially on this street, which, forgive me, I don't have the exact numbers, I think it's nine properties. We're all very much, you know, requested it, supported it, we're in favor of it. We can certainly hope they're going to do the right thing and travel the right way. But the bigger is where it meets Hobart Ave, you will lose, because now it'll have do-not-enter signs. So that is the key traffic movement from both UPS, Amazon, landscapers, that's the key movement we want to stop. And the residents should adapt rather quickly. Will they sneak out the other way if they live on the, you know, lower side there? Possibly. And then it's an enforcement issue, but in theory it should be pretty quickly because there'll be two very large do-not-enter signs revealed to Hobart Ave.
Thank you Director Schrager. Okay, are there any other questions from members of council? So at this point, I will ask if there are any comments from members of the public or questions. Come on up, Mr. Bassman.
This is a private issue, I took the Legion hat off. I live at the corner, at the northeast corner of Hartley and Canoe Brook Parkway. It has become increasingly busy. People have become to the point where they're using Canoe Brook Parkway as a bypass for River Road and Morris Avenue, both in the morning and in the evening rush hours. The number of children that live in this neighborhood has increased dramatically in the past several years. I've lived there since 1974. Traffic along Canoe Brook Parkway has always been a problem. Approximately 10 years ago, I wrote a letter that was cosigned by 40 people who live along Canoe Brook Parkway, asking the chief of police if he could do anything to slow down traffic on Canoe Brook Parkway. Thank you, I'm delighted. I spoke to several neighbors who surround that intersection. They were all very pleased to have the four-way. It's going to make it a little difficult for me because I pull out my driveway, I'm going to have to stop, but I don't care because I think it'll save lives in the end. In the time I've lived there, there have been cars in accidents that ended up on the lawns of all four adjoining properties to the intersection. So that's, that gives you an idea of how severe it is. I heard some talk about possibly putting in a circle or a roundabout at Woodland and Canoe Brook. And I would encourage you that if the intersection is large enough to do so, that it be done because the stop sign at Hartley Road and Canoe Brook will slow people down for that section of the road. But if people are slowed down at Woodland, I think that'll keep the speed limit, the speed accessing, excessive speeding down for the whole, the whole length of the road. Neighbors and I sometimes scream and shout at somebody coming, zooming down that road at a very inappropriate speed. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bassman. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Ms. Gagnon?
Hi, Mr. Bassman is my neighbor and I do want to reiterate what he said. It took a long time for us to get a stop sign right at Canoe Brook in Bedford and that stop sign has stopped a lot of people just continuing around that bend right towards my house. But I'm very concerned that that stop sign that you guys are putting in is just going to stop. to stop traffic for just that time being. That intersection at Canoe Brook and Beverly is just as dangerous. The intersection at Canoe Brook and Woodland is just as dangerous. I really think you guys need to look at those two other intersections to slow the rest of the traffic down, because kids from, from the high school, from oratory, they just speed around, and they'll stop, but I don't think they'll see those stop signs right away. And all these kids walking, it's just really dangerous. And just like Mr. Bassman said, they speed down, and it's like a war zone after school. So if you guys can just add a couple extra patrolmen and just let them know what's going on after school, I'd really appreciate it, because I've had kids almost come and hit me, my neighbors back out of their driveway, and it's just really dangerous. So if we can look at adding those extra stop signs through those two other intersections, I think it would really slow down the rest of that street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schrager, I had a question for you, because my understanding is that stop signs are not permissible for the purpose of slowing down traffic. Is that correct?
That is correct. A stop sign is not used to, as a traffic calming device, so there could be some. But the key is to follow on what Ms. Gagnon had said, is when you implement anything that's structural, whether it's just signs, or whether you actually realign an intersection, there will be follow-up studies, because this will probably discourage some traffic, and now where is it going? And it might be over on Butler, and this, you know, this could then force us to look at Butler. Again, though Butler had some traffic calming implemented. And then now we can see how speed has been affected by this stop sign, though that is not the purpose of these stop signs. Is it helping with that? Are you getting people who are more aware and just driving slower just because they know they have a stop coming? Follow-up studies will do that, and that probably would be, you know, October, November, once people have adjusted to it. And then we're happy to look at Beverly as well, the second intersection. And to Mr. Bassman's point, yes, the only intersection where a roundabout could be
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
constructed within the design requirements would be Woodland and Canoe Brook, because
Aye.
Mr. Bortan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
a lot of real estate there.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to our second ordinance for final consideration.
But that's not an easy fix.
Ordinance number 22-3264, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, traffic section 7-11.2,
There's not a couple bucks for a stop sign, so that, you know, we're going to look at that and come up with a cost to consider it, but that's not something we could just kind of do by ordinance, that would get a major contract.
stops intersections designated of the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Little, would you like to? I mean, members of public?
May I become the President?
Okay, so with that, I'm going to close this hearing, and we'll move on to ordinances
And we just had a hearing on this ordinance as well, to establish a four-way stop sign at the corner of the intersection of Canoe Brook Parkway and Hartley Road.
for final consideration. Madam Clerk, could you read the first one, please?
At this point, I would ask that we approve this ordinance.
Ordinance number 22-3263, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, traffic section 7-10, I second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
one-way streets of the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit. Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
As the President, May I become the President?
Mr. Bortan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to our second ordinance for final consideration.
We just had the hearing on this ordinance, and now I ask that we approve this ordinance
Ordinance number 22-3264, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, traffic section 7-11.2,
to establish a one-way road on Hobart Road in northbound direction.
stops intersections designated of the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit. I second.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little, would you like to? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
May I become the President?
Aye.
And we just had a hearing on this ordinance as well, to establish a four-way stop sign
Ms. Harrison?
at the corner of the intersection of Canoe Brook Parkway and Hartley Road. At this point, I would ask that we approve this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Bortan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we're now moving on to resolutions, and we're going to start with Finance, and we're going to do a little rearranging. So we're going to start with Finance numbers six and seven, and then go to item number five.
Thank you, Council President. We're doing Finance Resolutions.
Starting from the bottom.
Finance resolutions are like Star Wars this evening. We're going to start with the.
With the originals.
I thought it would be funnier. All right, okay, all right. We're going to start with, we're going to start with 9803. This is a resolution endorsing the 2022 Fire Headquarters Brick Paver Fundraising Campaign. As I'm sure most are aware, the City of Summit is in the midst of constructing a new firehouse for the brave men and women of the Summit Fire Department. Fundraising has begun in order to make enhancements to the building, including things like fitness equipment, furniture, and accessories, kitchen, the kitchen, sleeping quarters, the education area, and various other needs that are not included in the construction costs. So in order to help meet those needs, a brick paver fundraising campaign will commence. Pavers of various sizes will be made available for purchase and customization, and the goal of the campaign is to raise a minimum of $300,000 in new cash pledges by the end of December 2022, in order to receive an additional $100,000 in funding from a private foundation. The quiet phase of this has been underway, but the loud phase of the fundraising is about to begin, and I will kick that off now by being the third person tonight to ask everyone who's watching to consider making a donation to this outstanding cause, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. I think this is a great project, and I want to thank the mayor and for all her hard work in, and I believe there were several foundation people working with you. But I think, you know, you've spent a lot of time putting this together, and I hope everyone will support this. This is a very important cause, and our firefighters do a great job for us, and we'd like them to have a new headquarters that will do a great job for them, so.
So, and I just wanted to just add really quickly that, you know, the city is providing, as it should, a new firehouse. It's over 100 years old. But these firefighters, they run into danger, and while we run away, as we should, but they run into danger, and, you know, the firehouse is their home. When they're on duty and they're there and they're not at their own homes, we wanted it to be a place where it's comfortable, that they can sleep well, they can exercise, they can do all these things that are really important for their own, their mental health, their well-being, physical well-being. And, you know, it was a big number to do this firehouse, so we just felt, I, given the way the money was raised for, you know, the Veterans Memorial, the way this community is so generous with the EMT, with Grace, with so many organizations in town, I just thought it was something that people would want to step up and help out. And it's, you know, small, little, but it's to be part of it. And since you don't want to put a big plaque on the wall inside the building, because most of us don't go inside the firehouse very often, that way, this way, there'll be pavers outside, and you can just see, you know, show your thanks and your recognition for your, for our firefighters who are there for us, and we're so blessed to have them. So that's it, thank you. So I hope, it'll be easy to access it on the website, lots of information about how you can, you can, you know, you can phone DCP, you can set, write a check, you can do it by credit card, you can do it by Community Pass. And a lot of people are already registered for Community Pass in this town. There's over 7,400 people that are registered for Community Pass, so you can do it that way, too. So we want to make it nice and easy for you to give us money.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so if there are no other, are there comments from members of the public on this one? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to Finance number seven.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9888, and this resolution requests permission for dedication by rider for revenues, for the acceptance of Big Quest legacies, gifts, for the 2022 Fire Headquarters Brick Paver Fundraising Campaign trust. So in order to set up a dedicated trust, permission must be obtained from the Director of the Division of Local Government Services. This resolution requests that permission, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now moving on to number five, Finance. Councilmember Bortan?
Thank you, Council President, in, I think, because I think some people are waiting to hear about this one. This resolution establishes a Broad Street West Advisory Committee. So throughout the course of this year, we heard from several, several members of the community who said they were willing to help with the redevelopment process. As Mayor Radist often says, Summit's best asset is its people, and we are lucky to have hundreds of people who volunteer their time and talent on various city boards, committees, and commissions. We are now creating another, the Broad Street West Advisory Committee. So I will describe the purpose of the group, how many people will be on it, the qualifications and experience of the people we hope will apply. I will outline the application process and timeframe. I'll outline the selection process and timeframe, proactively address some of the questions I think people may have. And while I hope that my explanation will be relatively clear, I am eager to answer any questions that there may be after the introduction as well. So, the purpose of the group, in a nutshell, to provide advice to council about the financials of any potential deal as related to Broad Street West. More specifically, and reading directly from the resolution, to investigate the assumptions forming the basis for a proposed purchase price of the city-owned land to be developed, including the estimate revenue anticipated to be generated by the project, to review and report on any financial information pertaining to the proposed project that may be submitted to the committee, to consider the potential for a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot structure, to generally identify questions and any concerns regarding the financial impact of the proposed redevelopment project on the community, and/or any pilot to be further evaluated by the city's financial professionals, and then to bring to the attention of the common council such related matters as may be deemed appropriate. So, this is an advisory committee, much like any other advisory committee. It has the power to make recommendations to the common council. Ultimately, the decision to do or not do anything is the responsibility of the members of council alone, and each member will have to weigh the advice and recommendations we receive from this committee, from the other committees and commissions, and from, of course, the individuals in the community, in order to make a decision that each of us will have to justify. So, who will be on it? Five qualified volunteer members of the community, the mayor, the council president, the chair of the finance committee, which is yours truly, the city administrator, and city professionals as deemed necessary. The qualifications of people we hope will apply, essentially, finance professionals with experience that is relevant to redevelopment. So, reading again from the resolution, quote, "extensive work experience in real estate development and construction loan finance, or a specialized expertise in alternative asset class investment with a demonstrated understanding of residential, commercial, and retail use pro forma analysis, project loan underwriting, real estate market risk assessment, and capital deployment." So, the application process and timeframe. Applications will be available through the city's updated online application portal, and the city will leverage the considerable strength of the Office of Communications to publicize this opportunity and ensure as large an applicant pool of qualified individuals as possible. The application period will be open beginning tomorrow, September 7th, and remain open until September 20th, 2022. Even if you've submitted an application for a different city board or commission before, if you would like to be on the BSW committee, please submit a new one utilizing the new online portal, so that we can make sure we're considering all the applications and that they all filter through the same system. The selection process and timeframe. So, once the application process closes on September 20th, council and the mayor will review the applications and make our selections in the same way we do for other boards and commissions. We will discuss the applications with one another. Some combination of council members may want to speak to the individuals who have applied. Ultimately, as a group, we will come to a decision in closed session on who we will appoint. Then, we will announce our choices and vote on their announcement, appointment in the form of a resolution at the council meeting on Thursday, council meeting's on Thursday, October 6th. So, some of the questions I think people may have. First, why aren't there any design professionals on the committee? There are a few answers to this question. First, as discussed earlier this evening, we've directed the developers to come back to us with options. We need to know that there's, those options are financially viable for both the developers and for the city first. If there is no deal to be had here, then it doesn't matter what an updated design looks like, there won't be a deal. Second, we have had extensive community involvement and engagement on the design aspects. We've heard clearly, I think, what is desirable and not desirable. And third, if we have what looks to be a viable deal, then we will get an updated design, and at that point, we'll be able to seek public input around the design. But because of how highly subjective the design can be, it wouldn't be practical or make sense to have a committee about that at this point. So, when will the meetings of the Broad Street West Advisory Committee be? We are not sure yet. Meetings will be held as necessary, but the hope is that in the roughly four weeks between now and when the members are appointed, the developers and financial professionals will have something prepared for the committee to review. Will meetings of this committee be open to the community, and will there be minutes made available for the community to review? No. The meetings will not be open to the community, there will not be minutes made available. The reason is because this group will have access to proprietary and confidential information related to an ongoing negotiation. Anyone with experience making a deal of any kind, whether professionally or personally, buying a house or a car, and certainly the professionals making up this committee, will understand that a negotiation simply cannot happen out in the open. It is our fiduciary responsibility as stewards of the city to ensure that we get the best, the best possible deal. The nature of this process is that the discussions must remain confidential in order to maintain leverage throughout the negotiation. There may be meeting summaries or other reports prepared by this committee and presented to council, but for the same reason, those things must remain private. However, it is important to remind everyone that ultimately, if there's going to be a redevelopment agreement, all of the details will be made public, and legally, the community will have the opportunity to review and comment several times on every aspect of the agreement prior to council voting. What is the term of membership on the committee? I'm getting close, I promise. The term is for the council year in which members have been appointed. So for this committee, it will be until December of this year. If there is still work to be done, we will extend the term, and we will do that by resolution. Will the committee end if a redevelopment agreement is signed? Yes. If a redevelopment agreement is voted on and approved, the committee's work will be complete and the committee will be dissolved. So, I move to adopt this resolution, and I will stop talking for a minute.
And I will second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Wait, we're doing council's comments, and then I'll call for the public, okay? Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Yep, I just want to say, I think this is, through you, Council President, I think this is a very good step for Broad Street West and kind of this next chapter. So, I just wanted to say that I look forward to seeing how this progresses and involving the community more, so.
I agree, thank you. Okay, any other comments from members of council? Okay, with that, we'll open up comments to members of the public. Come on up, sir. Please state your name and address, and.
Peter Engelhardt, 28 Oakland Place, E-N-G-E-L-H-A-R-D-T. I have absolutely no objection whatsoever to the establishment of this committee, but the methodology of the establishment, where the city decides who's going to be on the committee, taints it from the get-go. Why would you, Greg, why would you put anyone on the committee who disagrees with you? You won't. It's going to be your stooges on this committee to come up with a proposal and whitewash everything, and then you'll present it to the general public as basically saying, all these experts have agreed on this plan. I make a very simple suggestion. You have this committee, the city puts up three people, we, the general public, put up three people, and the six of us sit down and figure the whole thing out. That's that simple. Otherwise, this whole thing is a whitewash and it's tainted. That's it.
Are there any other comments? Come on up.
So my name is James Tamaro, T-A-M-M-A-R-O, 6 Glendale Road, Summit, New Jersey. I'd like to echo what Peter just said. I think it's offensive for common council just to choose people who have a financial background, I do, people that have a real estate background, and go with that committee. I mean, there's taxpayers in the City of Summit. I'd like to echo what Peter just said. I think it's offensive for common council just to choose people who have a financial background. I do. People that have a real estate background and go with that committee. I mean, there's taxpayers in the city of Summit. They may have a lot of other vocations that they're involved in. And I just don't understand why you pick from that group. I just don't think that's fair. And I think the suggestion where you come up with two or three people and the city comes up with two or three people, I think that's more than fair. And I just think you ought to take that under consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks so much.
I do want to point out, this is a financial, the point of this is financial. So, there is no point in having people from other backgrounds for this particular exercise. This is to advise us on the finances. So, no, we're not, we're... No, sir, it's not a back and forth, please.
Okay, but don't you think other people who come from a different background can also opine on finances? You're dealing with smart people who have gotten this far. I think it's only fair to give them the opportunity as well.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Hi, Miriam Zahn, 65 Woodland Avenue. I do love the idea of having the public put forth some people. I think that's a really good one. One thing that I heard, you know, that I was expecting from this steering committee was that there would be people representing other things besides finance. I think it's really important to have financial experts from the town on the steering committee. I guess when the conversation started a few months ago, I thought this steering committee would be a little bit broader. And so, and, you know, hearing Councilman Vartan say, you know, the anticipated questions, you know, "Why aren't other people in the committee like designers?" Yeah, that was actually my question. So, I understand the answer. But then that begs the question, if we don't need people weighing in, will this meet the master plan? Will the design be 72 units as stated in the master plan? Or is this still all up in the air? Because I think that some of that, like, yes, hearing the public and, you know, having a good idea of what the public wants, but we're not going to see a redesign, like, that somebody else is just going at it right now. And when it comes back to us, are we going to be doing this again? You know, like, wouldn't it be good to kind of have the public involved in that conversation a little sooner and part of that steering committee so that hopefully we can just move this process along a little bit faster? I feel like excluding the public from that part of it and not having them on the steering committee could just kind of make this take longer.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, Mr. Kane.
Good evening, Council President. Peter Kane, 3 Iris Road. Couple of questions to clarify. Through the chair, Mr. Vartan. So, there are going to be five members of this committee, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
And I think you rattle off that some of the members of this five-member committee will be the mayor, the council president, the city administrator, and finance chair. Is that correct?
Those are additional members.
Five residents.
Five.
Five residents, okay, so...
Five qualified community volunteers plus council president, mayor, city administrator, any staff that are necessary, and the finance chair.
So, what's the total number of people who are going to be on this committee?
So, nine? Ten?
Ten. So, five qualified citizens.
Correct.
And five sitting officials or staff members.
Yes.
That's my understanding?
Yeah, yeah.
And the criteria for the five qualified people, you rattle off some alternative investment, expertise, real estate finance professionals, et cetera. I'm struck by the irony, Council President, that nobody on this dais, except for maybe Mr. Rogers, has any of those qualifications. And yet, five of you will be sitting in this committee and opining on these decisions, hopefully with the advice of these other five professionals. But none of you have any qualifications to sit on your own committee.
I think the purpose of our sitting on this committee is to hear what the professionals have to say, not to opine ourselves. But one of the people will be our financial advisor, who does have that expertise, and Mr. Rogers does as well.
How ironic that you bring that up, Council President, because as I understand from the agenda, you're going to be appointing a new financial manager tonight because clearly you were not happy with the financial manager and the advice you were getting from the previous advisor. Good for you. I think all of us applaud you for that. But it sort of begs the question as to why we were vying at that person at any point before. As you, I think, are aware, and Ms. Liederman asked me to check and to specifically ask that the letter that she and I penned on behalf of residents for Summit, was that distributed through the chair, Ms. Le Case, to every member of this body?
Yes, it was.
To every member? Yes, okay, oh, thank you, thank you, okay. So, I think you're missing what Ms. Liederman and I were trying to represent for an almost 2,000-person organization in town. I think we were pretty clear that what you're proposing tonight just totally misses the mark. And I hear all the time about how you're listening. You're dogged. You're dogged about reminding us and upbraiding us about how you're listening. That letter could not have been clearer. It gave you a roadmap. And quite frankly, if I was your advisor, I'd say, "Work with us within that structure." The best way to control this process and to control the result is to work within that process. You're spitting in our faces. You're flying in the face of everything you say you've paused on. So, I'm just really bitterly, bitterly disappointed at you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any other comments from members of the public?
Hi, Susan Bowen, 45 Waldron Avenue.
Good evening.
And barring a conflicts check, which I will do tomorrow morning, please expect my application because this is exactly in my wheelhouse of what I do up to, including residential and pilot taxes and all that stuff.
Wonderful.
One thing I'm thinking would make some sense is if you let the committee have a little bit of heft. So, I can, in my current position, I act as a fiduciary, which means that I'm sort of Solomon. And I'm the one who talks to the different sides and tries to come to some arrangement. And I think it would make some sense if you gave the committee some power either through the new firm or through the administrator to do sensitivities, to do, where we could say, "Please run these same numbers under this different set of assumptions and come back to us and tell us what it says." That'll be really important because it could show you the downside and the upside of how this project could work over time. And right now, I don't think you have that information. So, I think it is a good thing to think about how you could add some heft to this committee as far as what the committee could engage either the city or the financial firm to do for the committee to help with the financial analysis. Because I think, from my point of view, one of the problems with the financial analysis in the last time was that it simply didn't make any sense. And there was no way to take the numbers and throw them in an Excel file and do the sorts of sensitivity analysis, which is really important, really, really important in this sort of analysis. In other committees I've worked on like this, the committee has power to hire its own council. I know that's probably not possible here. But you really need to think about what, what other powers, even if it's in a fiduciary role, where it's making a recommendation and not in a decision-making role. Even if it's in a fiduciary role, what this committee can do and how they can really, really drill down on these numbers. And in order to do that, you're going to have to talk to Mr. Rogers or talk to the financial analysis firm to say, "Throw that out, do it with these assumptions." And then have them come back with those assumptions and say, "Okay, now give me 15 sensitivities on that set of data." Because that's the way you get information. And that's how you learn how these projects will work over time. And there's really no other way to do it. I assure you. I've been doing this for 35 years. There's no other way. So, that's my suggestion to you. I hope I don't have any conflicts and that I can apply, but I really don't know. I have to find out. So, thanks very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bowen. You raised some good questions for us to think about. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Come on up, Ms. Hamlet. Could everyone please speak into the microphone? I'm hearing from people at home that they can't hear.
Oh, sure, Delia Hamlet, 11 Brantwood. So, Mr. Vartan, if I may ask a question to Mr. Vartan.
Through me.
Through you, Council President. Could you just repeat the piece on the pilot? It was so much information.
Just while he's looking for... This is all going to be on the city's website tomorrow.
I know, but in order for me to ask the question, I need to truly understand what...
I just wanted to clarify that.
I just, it was a lot of information. I think going forward, we could just put it on there. It would solve. I just don't think that fast sometimes.
So, the, under the, you know, the resolution will be up on the website. Where it says, "Under the purpose of the group," one of the points, which will be a bullet point, is "to consider the potential for a payment in lieu of taxes pilot structure."
And if anyone wants to look at it, it's in the packet online right now.
Okay, got it. So, I just wanted to make sure. It was a lot of words. So, does that mean we're definitely doing a pilot?
No, precisely, what we're asking is the group to consider that as an option or perhaps not as an option. I think it's one of many funding structures that could be considered by the group.
That's perfect. I just wanted to make sure. And then the second question is regarding the committee. Will they have any input on the ongoing financial advisor?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
So, from what I understand, we are hiring a new financial advisor for the Broad Street West project.
Correct.
Will the committee, it seemed like, what was the thought process in obtaining the new financial advisor without the collaboration of the committee? And there's probably a very good reason, I just don't know.
Because we need someone to make sure that we have the material in an order that will allow the resident, the resident experts to look at it. We need someone who's going to make sure that what we get from the redevelopers can be analyzed, that the right information is there. You know, otherwise, we get something from the redevelopers that might have the information that the experts need, it might not. It makes sense to have someone, you know, who's an expert in this area working with the residents.
Understand, and that's fine. I just have some concerns around using somebody that we're already using because I think if we're to be protected as residents, does it, is there a conflict of interest? Maybe not. I've actually heard they're wonderful.
There is not a conflict of interest because we are all aligned in the sense that we want to get the best deal for Summit. We hope that the residents, as well as we on council, want to get the best deal for the community. So, you know...
Okay, that's fine. And then the last question regarding the term of the committee members. So, that's through December.
End of December, end of the year.
End of December of this year.
Correct.
So, we are...
We reappoint if...
If we're still working, we'll keep it going.
Perfect, that's all I...
Okay. Any other questions from members of the public? Good evening, Mr. Hardy.
Good evening. Carrie Hardy, 1 Oak Knoll Road. I'd like to second the eloquent words of Peter Kane, both in writing and as he spoke them here this evening. And I'd like to say that I think your primary job, in addition to the details of Broad Street West project, is to regain, regain the trust of the people who you represent. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Good evening.
Good evening, Mary Zimmerman, Edgewood Road, Summit. In your closed session, you discussed litigation and attorney-client privilege on Broad Street West redevelopment project. I have a question for you about that. Are you in a contract with Toll Brothers?
I'm going to throw that to Mr. Jacoby or to Michael. I think that's a legal question unless Michael...
Well, I can just state the business fact of it. It was a, we are in a conditional designation with those two developers.
What does that mean? I'm not an attorney.
It was an agreement that was made between the city and those two developers. So, yes, and we, they are...
And you signed it.
Yes, that's been...
It's a legal document now.
It is a legal document.
And you would have to get out of that contract?
You would have to de-designate them and that would require governing body action.
What would that require?
It would require governing body action to de-designate those developers.
Okay, will that be discussed in your committee? Dr., Ms. Fox?
What committee are you referring to?
The Broad Street West.
The advisory committee?
Yeah. Will you bring that up? Will it discuss the fact that you have a contract with Toll Brothers and you have a legal document that says that you have to hire them?
We don't, we are not hiring them. It's, that's...
What does the document say?
They are, Toll Brothers and L&amp;M are conditionally designated as the redevelopers. The way the redevelopment law works is there's, basically, we have agreed that we will only negotiate with them unless we at some point decide to part ways, which would require an action from council to do so.
Okay, so what if the...
I don't think that, you know, if that, I don't think that's the plan for this committee, but...
Well, you have to consider that, don't you?
Well, yes, if there's not a deal that's to be made, yes. I guess that would be a thing that could be considered.
I just wanted to bring that up because I was concerned. I saw it on your, you know, your closed session agenda and I was concerned that there was something else that needed to be addressed. But it's okay. And first of all, another thing, I want to thank all of you for your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Mr. Bennett, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Council President, Mayor Rades, members of council, Jim Bennett, B.E.N.N.E.T.T., 38 Fairview Avenue. I had prepared remarks, but because the details of this committee are being unveiled for the first time tonight and they're a little bit different from what we anticipated, I can't follow the script. Just to go off topic on a couple of things. First of all, I was very encouraged by the press release indicating the city intends to have the developer conform to the current redevelopment plan. And I was also very pleased to hear that the building that was proposed to go between the library and the YMCA is now off the table. So, just a couple of things. I was hoping that the Citizens Committee was going to be broader in scope than merely financial. And I was prepared to suggest if they would be willing to step forward, 18 names, but that would not be in accordance with what's being, what's being proposed. I hope that the subject of fiscal impact will be handled this time much better than it was handled last time because I was extremely disappointed. We had an expert come and give a statement before council when he didn't have his supporting documents ready. And I hope that that will not be repeated. Finally, I hope that the committee will be a strong one that commands the attention of council and of the, all the segments of the Summit public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I just want to clarify when people, you can sit down. I just wanted to say, make a general statement that another piece of this process will be engagement of the, and I think Mr. Vartan mentioned this, the engagement with the different city committees that will also be brought into the process. So, there will, you know, we have a number of sitting city committees that have expertise in different subject matter areas. And, you know, we will be bringing them in as, and they are members of the community as well. So, that's another way that we do get engagement. And there will also be opportunities for the public to come to meetings and make comments as well. So, it's not just the financial component. There will be more opportunities for engagement. So, I want to just reassure you of that. I assume, Ms. Oliver, you're next up?
Yes, thank you, Deborah Oliver, Tulip Street. So, I want to support what Mr. Kane had to say about the suggestion that was proffered to all of you on council, which was for a much more inclusive and jointly share, excuse me, joint council-citizen steering committee. Because I think that by focusing only on finances, you are foreclosing the things that people care most about or have expressed so far to you. So, I'm feeling a little bit of tone deafness here. The design process is a complicated one. And if you've ever been through design development of a building or commercial real estate or waterfront property, of a building, or commercial real estate, or waterfront property, you start with the zoning. And from the zoning, you, that's a drawing, the rules, statutes, and then you produce a drawing. That's called a schematic design. From the schematic design, you often step back and do a check on where do the finances look as compared to what you've laid out as a schematic. And if the finances are working, then you proceed to design development, and so on and so forth. And the scheme progresses with a constant feedback loop between the design, which is not subjective, because it's guided by zoning, and the financial aspect, which is a wish, an aspiration, or, you know, it's on the books. So I think you're oversimplifying things to say that design is subjective in this case. And I think you're also foreclosing the process of having the residents involved transparently at the beginning, which is what we've been asking for all along, rather than being shown something that's baked and done, and then it's all about the finances. It's got to be an organic and involve process from both sides. So I would ask that you seriously consider broadening the people that can serve on this committee, even beyond specific expertise, so that all the many voices, including those with great institutional knowledge, Millie Cooper comes to mind, can participate in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Good evening.
Evening. Steve Sartorius, Tulip Street. Just when I was listening to Mr. Vartan, it struck me that by structuring the committee the way you're proposing, so you'll get a proposal from Topology, whatever, you'll run it through, and it'll get approved financially. And then you're going to put that in front of the town and say, "This is what we're going with." And if there's any pushback, the fallback is going to be, "Well, we've got to do it this way, because it's the project that works financially for us." So by separating and compartmentalizing the financial from the design, I don't think it works. If people don't like what comes out, but it's financially approved, you know, the fallback will be, "Okay, well, but financially it makes sense, so we have to go with this." And I think that's, you're doing it, looking at it too simplistically. I think it has to be, as my wife said, an organic process, a back and forth, a feedback loop. Any other way, I don't think makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maura? Good evening, Ms. Cooper.
Good evening. Millie Cooper, 1 Euclid Avenue, in Summit. I just want to say that I heard you loud and clear, and I want to thank you, because I did hear part of what I wanted to hear. And I went, working on three, I guess there are four Ps over the summer. And one was pause, and one was protect, and one was pursue, and then one is proceed. So I think the pause took place, and I heard some protection, and I was very, very happy about that. The, between the library and the YM, I was very, very happy about that. And the four stories, very happy about that. Now we're up to the pursue, and Mr. Vartan worked very hard on that, and tried to answer a lot of questions that we do, we did have. But I did hear just in the last five minutes from Mrs. Fox, that they, it isn't just finances. Maybe that's what you said, Maura, I'm not sure. I mean, by that, I mean you'd open up to other people and their ideas.
Absolutely.
Because this is not just about finances. It never was, and it never should be. This is our community, the best I've ever known in my 89 years. And it has been worked through the years, and people have been hard at work. And they were in this council, not this one, but other councils, in this town. And they fought like crazy, and they said, "You didn't hear, and you didn't do this." And they came out with some pretty good, and you know what they are, always talked about them, the depression of the railway, which made our town different than any other town on the line. And they fought like hell for that. And they disagreed because financially, my goodness, to go, you know, all that they, anyway. And here we are again. And I think you do need to have the finances, but you have to broaden this to what Mr. Kane said in his letter, and in there, it's broader than just that. I've had people come up to me who are my age, because they're in the senior citizen, and they want to talk about it because they live right across the street. And they said, "Maybe you can do something, Millie." I said, "Well, I don't know. I really don't know." But I think we're getting, we're getting there. We're really getting there. But let's keep it open, and then, and then, don't make, you're not going to close it off in December. I know you're not. I mean, you know, there's going to be people out there who have really worked really hard, and we want to, we want to be together on this. That's the thing. We want you to trust, and we want to trust, and we got to be together on this. We're getting there. So let's just keep going on it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Good evening, Ms. Letterman.
Nikki Letterman, 2 Clark Street, LEDR man. I co-authored that letter with Peter on behalf of, we were asked to write it for Residents for Summit, which represents approximately 1,700 people. I would like to stress a couple of key points in that letter. One being that this started out with broad support. I have been at almost all of the meetings, presentations, going back several years. I was very enthusiastic about this. It was apolitical. Full stop. It is no longer apolitical. I don't know why. I wrote a letter to the Democratic Committee, basically asking, "What the hell are you doing?" Apparently, it wasn't even distributed to any of you. I don't understand where you're coming from, okay? I would like to understand, maybe there is, there are really good reasons why we are wrong in our objections to this. I don't know. I don't have the information. It feels like this is being rammed down our throats. Despite the pause, which I was very happy to hear about, it now sounds like, okay, we're going to have enough, we're going to have an advisory committee, you have no authority, council will listen, yada, 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 and then we're going to approve this. My background is product design and development, primarily mass market, which means I designed furniture. I have to, and I work with Chinese factories. I have to be able to work with people who don't speak my language from here and communicate with them so that they make it correctly. I have to communicate very clearly, use the right language, to make sure they understand. Number two, I have to make sure that everything is cost-effective. When I designed outdoor furniture, changing on a chair, a weld to a bend, saved 25 cents. Multiply that by four chairs, two arms, and a table, and you're talking about $40 or $50 at retail, okay? Little things add up. My point to that, and I did get a little sidetracked, is that there's something called design thinking, which I think needs to be applied here. Design thinking is opening your mind to new possibilities that you haven't thought of. This is where innovation comes from. And a classic example of this is, they said, "The electric light bulb was not invented by tinkering with the candle." It takes something completely different. It takes brainstorming. It takes thinking outside of the box. It takes looking at alternate fields. One of the big influences on architecture is looking at the plant world, to see how nature designs plants. And that leads to designs of cities and street patterns in an organic way. I would like to see, okay, the feeling I get, and please correct me, I'm wrong, is we're looking for a path forward to make this current proposal happen. Yeah, we're going to tweak it a little bit, we're going to knock out a little story here or there, we're going to take 10 feet off of this side, and, you know. We're looking at how to tinker with what we already have. How do we make the numbers work and tinker with this design so that people shut up and go away, and we get this building? Why you want it so much? Again, I don't know, and I wish I understood. Because I've heard despair, I've heard both sides. I've heard in private that sometimes Mr. Rogers tells people, "Summit doesn't have a financial problem." And then I hear Summit does have a financial problem. I don't know, and I'm not a financial person. I don't know what numbers we have to meet, but there are alternative solutions. And by not opening this up to a broad spectrum of people who come from different areas, you're not going to get that creative solution that where Summit becomes a leader for the rest of the state that is going through this overdevelopment crisis. You know, we're, in this particular place, no, we're not taking out trees, for instance, but in general, the overdevelopment is removing trees and creating flooding problems and traffic problems. For what? Why is this even a rental? I looked at, on the city website, approx, just under 30% of this town is rental. It's like somewhere between 26% and 29%, apparently depending on the year. That's a high percentage. And we have affordable rentals, not designated, but along Mars Avenue, the, by, across from Norwood, those apartments, they're relatively affordable. We have affordable apartments in this town. Most people aspire to homeownership. Why aren't we looking at homeownership? I mean, isn't that everybody's dream? You know, we're, Toll and L&amp;M, they build these massive monstrosity apartment complexes. This state is becoming oversupplied with apartment buildings. You know, next is warehouses and already, Amazon has already canceled something like 21 warehouses in this country that they're building, okay? These developers, that's their job. They go in and they develop. They don't care about the consequences. So we're going to get stuck with this part. How do we know people are going to rent this thing? Is there that much demand for more rental in Summit? I think there's demand for homeownership.
Ms. Letterman, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, because...
I'm wrapping up right now. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public? Good evening, Mr. McGoy.
Kevin McGoy, Woodland Avenue. I feel a little bit responsible for this myopic focus on financials. I just want to explain that when I first, when I first reached out to you, I think for the first several weeks, the only reason why I wound up at financials is because the reason you were doing, proposing to do something so extreme was all about the money. That's the only reason why I really focused on the financials. I think it's very important that we have some, I love financial people, I'd love to sit around, I'd love for you to invite me on this committee and sit around with four other guys.
You need to apply.
I would love for you to take me on, and, you know, and I'd love to help, and I'd love to sit around and talk to four other financial guys, but I don't think that...
Or women.
I don't, four other financial people, I'm sorry. But I don't think that's helpful. I think you do need, I would very much enjoy people who had more expertise in that. So I think that by just having financial people, and people are concerned about, and what it sounds like to me is, you're going to come with something that is already built up, or whatever's been talked about, and then bring it and say, make financial sense, and then go from there. And that was never, the financials were never the primary concerns, I think, that most of the residents have. I think that the fact that what we had concerns about, we're being, we were told that, "Well, we don't have a choice, because we need the money, and this is the only thing that makes financial sense." And I think that clearly, it's obvious now, it should be, that you guys were misled. I mean, I think Robert Powell is, you fired him, I assume? Or did he quit? Or why are we hiring somebody new?
Because we felt we needed to.
Fired him, right. And Danny, I remember Danny, my first conversation with you, Kevin, do you think you know more than an expert? He's an expert. I think that we are where we are now, in large part, based...
We're not conceding that we were misled, but I think we need other voices.
Right, but I'm saying like...
We need other...
Even where we are today, where you're talking about going from, because you're talking about presenting something before the end of this year, the foundation of that is what we started with, right? It's this proposal, and it's being tweaked and...
No, the foundation is the redevelopment plan, which we spent three years developing with a lot of input from the community. We're not throwing out a redevelopment plan. And what you've asked us to do is to comply with the redevelopment plan.
But I think we've learned, I think we've learned a lot about the limitations, and maybe some of the complications associated with this being done under redevelopment. The laws are very restrictive. The fact that we can only have one bidder in the room is very problematic. And I think that then you're relying on your experts. I think Topology has done an equally poor job as Powell, perhaps a worse job than Powell. So I don't, and I'm not trying to beat you guys up, I really am not, but I really do, I'm just saying that, like, I don't know why we're not opening, why we're not reevaluating whether we should be doing this under redevelopment. And it doesn't sound like that's something that has been thought about or is going to be considered. Why Toll and L&amp;M, who, I looked at their financials, they were completely misleading you, completely. And Bob Powell didn't help you to understand that they were completely misleading you. But that's who you're negotiating with, and that's who you're still trusting.
No, we're not trusting them. We are working, you know...
I think, I think, I think by still only working with them, I don't, I don't think that's great. I mean, if that's what you do, I still want to help you, I still want to be involved with it, but I just think that, like, you're making it very difficult to come up with something. And whatever happens here can never be undone. It's permanent. So I think that a bigger step back is probably required, and you need more input from more professionals than just five financial people in a room evaluating, you know, a deal that one person presents with no other market checks. And that's the other thing, too, is even when you talk about this advisory group, what are the people in that advisory group going to be privy to? Everything? Are they going to have all of the financial data, all of the communication, all of the negotiation, like what went on? And I guess you can't answer it.
Well, I would look to...
Well, yeah.
Well, can we, before we do that, through you, Council President?
Yeah.
I want to apologize if perhaps I was not as clear as I meant to be. My intention was to make it very clear that this is another group that is being added, right? It's people who are subject matter experts in finance, who will provide advice to council on financials. We also have the Historic Preservation Commission, subject matter experts in historic preservation who can provide advice to council. Same thing with affordable housing, same thing with the Environmental Commission. We are, I think, if, perhaps it's my fault, if I made this out to be that we're going to take the advice of this group, and then that's it, we make a decision. My intention was actually to be quite the opposite, that this is another group of people who were going to, who are going to volunteer their time, and we're incredibly thankful for that, but will be just another group of people who will help us to evaluate this decision. So I just want to make sure I clarified that point. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, and I do hope you apply.
Oh, yeah, no, I will.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, though, because there are other folks waiting to talk.
Okay, but just please, like, Topology, why are they...
We hear you, okay? Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Good evening, Ms. Hardy.
Good evening. Vivian Hardy, 1 Oak Knoll Road. I think what you've heard tonight is that there are a substantial number of people in town who think perhaps we should stop. I know that will be very hard for you, because this is something that you would like to have in your background and be able to say, "It was accomplished." But the problem is that life is changing. Chatham is going to be putting a huge development right across from the hardware store on River Road, down there. That huge development is going to make a terrific traffic problem for Summit. Traffic is an issue that I've not hear you even talking about.
Traffic is an issue that I've not hear you even talking about. So that's one issue. The other is that Summit has, there are many issues, but another one is that Summit has a community atmosphere that doesn't look like a recycled mill. The architecture that's being proposed and the density that's being proposed for this development doesn't fit with the character of this town. Are we going to change this town into being just like a lot of other towns where some big developer comes in and makes the place a different place? Is that what we really want? It's not. At least it's not what I want for my town. I think it's time to step back, say to Toll Brothers, we're going to take a break here. Let's, let's figure out what will work for this town, given the changes that are going on in the world around us. Let's make it something that will be attractive. It can have lower income housing in it, if that's a good, if we need to do that, that's just fine. But let's make it be a place that feels like home, and not a place that feels like it's a mill house that had to be rebuilt. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from members of the public?
I'm going to be brief, since Amanda Block is here on behalf of Grace. I know she's been waiting patiently, but-
Sorry, Amanda.
Thank, sorry. Like Kevin said, and what he was saying, we don't need a redevelopment plan now. And I want to thank you for taking that lot off between the library and the Y, so I want to applaud you on that, on behalf of the people here for Residents for Summit. Thank you so much for listening to us and keeping that lot empty. So really, thank you, everybody, for doing that for us. But we don't need a redevelopment plan. And topology, you know, if you're getting rid of our financial and Dr. Powell, you have to get somebody else besides topology to look at this, because everyone's steering you guys in the wrong direction. So getting that, getting rid of that subdistrict, I really firmly believe, like Kevin's saying, you know, we just need a builder. You just need a builder to come in and look at Sub District Three. You know, you want to get, look at the parking lot behind the post office, fine. But I think we just need a builder, not a whole redevelopment plan now. We need to look at this in a whole new set of eyes. That's one thing. Through you, Council President, to Mr. Vartan and what he was saying about the Historic Preservation Commission, that's a committee. A lot of minutes were redacted from that, and we're still waiting on minutes that have not been put out. So if you are now putting a committee out there-
They're already posted, Ms. Gagnon.
They were posted?
Yes, they were.
I did not see them. But things have been redacted in the past from that. So I'm concerned-
Only one set of minutes was redacted, and it was because there was information in there that they were told should not be in there, and they went ahead and did it anyway.
Okay, I just, I just, I just want to, I just want to get my point across, that if we're now putting a committee that is appointed by you guys, and that committee and their opinion is not taken into account, I am concerned that the rest of the residents here in Summit are not going to hear their viewpoint. That's my concern, just like the Historic Preservation Committee. So those are my concerns, and I just want that to be stated for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay.
Council President.
Yes.
I know we want to move on, but can I make a comment?
Sure, sure.
So I don't know anything about redevelopment, so this has been a huge learning process for me. I am definitely a proponent for having the financial committee, because it's involving the community. But because I don't know anything about redevelopment, I didn't understand the hand-in-hand with having developers on it, you know, or development and architects on it, to work with financial people in order to balance that out. So, and I really appreciate, I just want to recognize the first gentleman who spoke, I apologize, I didn't write down your name, that I appreciate your concern regarding who we appoint and how we have to be careful about that appointment. This is a consequential, you know, development, and I agree with you, there should be no favoritism on who we appoint. So I highly recommend people should be applying if they think that they, in my opinion, I speak for myself, I think they should be applying. The question for you, Council President, and highly unusual that I would ask this in the sense that because the community is coming here, and I feel like in some ways, learning as you go, would we consider potentially expanding the committee to include, and I don't know if this would be a Greg or an Administrator Rogers question, but could we expand that committee to include people so that this process, as it moves along, is including the right people? I think ultimately, and I just want to say this, I think ultimately, we just have to build trust. The community just wants us to hear them, and I think that-
And listen.
And listen. So I don't know, I just want to throw that out there, because I feel terrible, I came to this council meeting assuming I'm going to vote yes. It's hard to look out into the crowd and hear what we hear and then vote yes. So I'm just, I would like to contemplate that publicly, because I feel like it's an important question. I don't know if it can be answered tonight, or now, but it will impact my vote, and it's not because I don't want to proceed with this. I think I want to proceed with this in good faith, and I want the community to know that I'm, I'm, I'm listening, that we're listening, but I would like to speak for myself, that I'm listening, and I share your concern. And so I would, I'll close on that. So I just, I don't know if you can answer that question.
Well, I can't speak on behalf of the whole council, we'll obviously have to go back and revisit this, but I would still argue that we could do, if, you know, if there's a decision that this is something that makes sense to do, we can do two things in tandem, but I think that the economic, or the financial group is a freestanding group. You're not going to put, you know, and maybe there's a back and forth between different groups, but you're not going to put financial people and architects in, and everyone's going to read a pro forma. It doesn't make sense from a skill set or a time perspective, in my mind. And, you know, and I think that what's happening is people are erasing three years of work that was done by engaging the public and getting comments on design issues. We also had a steering committee that had an architect on it and had people with, who were familiar with redevelopment. So it's not that we're just, you know, pulling this out of, you know, off the top of our heads. We created a redevelopment plan with a lot of engagement from the public. And I think that people are sort of forgetting that that was the first part of the process. And, you know, we heard you, you said you wanted us to comply with the redevelopment plan. We are doing that. We are going to come back with something that we have asked for, you know, a proposal that meets the redevelopment plan's restrictions, and then at that point, that's when the back and forth happens, and that's when the community gets involved, that's when all the committees get involved. But I, you know, I think we need to talk about whether it makes sense to do something else as well, but I think we need to move forward on the financial group in order to get that, that committee in place. And I would argue that that's, that's how we should handle this. I don't know if anyone else on council has a comment on that.
I would love to hear other opinions, if you don't mind. I think this is such an important decision tonight, and I apologize for-
I think we should get going, and, and yes, we can, we can, oh, sorry, sorry. When we can adjust, it takes a resolution, we can adjust. But I do think it's important to get the financial group, get, to get them going. And what, what Counselwoman Fox said, Counselwoman Fox said, is that we did get input from the community through precedent images, through meetings that we had at the council up at and other locations, on the steering committee, two members of the planning board, and a resident architect, not just all professionals. So did we make mistakes along the way? Yeah, we sure did. And then I, Ms. Letterman, I would submit that by listening to what Residents for Summit and other folks have said about making sure that this is compliant with the redevelopment plan, that wasn't where we started out, and now it is. Taking out-
I understand why that was ever reached.
I don't, I, I just, and we're taking, we're not-
Ms. Letterman, you've had your opportunity. This isn't, this is the mayor talking.
I didn't interfere, interrupt you, ma'am. Taking out Sub District Two, and just assuring the community that it's not something that we're going to do later, which is not going to be done, it's coming out. So that's listening. So I, I just think, just, we're trusting you, I need you to please try to rebuild some of your trust in us. And we, that's one of the reasons we came out right away tonight, and I said Sub District Two is coming out, just trying to make it clear, we understand and we agree with you. So I would encourage, I mean, I, I won't vote tonight, I don't get to vote, but I would encourage council to proceed and then go back, discuss it, and adjust if need be. Let's all talk about it, but let's not delay anymore. Let's just at least get this, this application process going. If we don't vote tonight, then the application process doesn't happen for another two weeks. And I would just like to just get started, that's all, that's my opinion. I mean, and there's no, and as Greg said, if we, we're not, if we're not done by the end of December, then we'll just keep going. That's all there is to it. And this is something that we feel it's important, we have a, we don't have a vacant lot there in a year, and we can't leave it vacant. So, and we'll figure out, the finance committee can look at ways to make it, make, see if it make, how it makes sense financially, and what makes sense. So-
So-
No, it's not just the design, the design comes too.
Councilmember Vartan, and then Councilmember Harris.
No, thank you.
You want, okay, go ahead, Ms. Harris.
No, I wanted to respond to Counselwoman Allen, to say, I am deeply disappointed in how we are discounting all of the engagement that has happened from January 2022 to July 2022. We are acting as if that engagement meant nothing. And that does concern me, Counselwoman Allen, as a member of the steering committee, that you are pausing when we spent a lot of time this summer really trying to hammer out what we heard, and we all agreed we needed to do a better job with the financial aspect. And so I am 100% in favor of this committee engaging the community as requested in a very complex financial transaction. And those of us who are saying revisit redevelopment, sorry, no. We have, as a community, we decided on that, and we will make the best out of it. If you look, why should Summit not take advantage of this vehicle that has been made available to municipalities? And it has a lot of opportunity for local weigh-in. And that is what this council is spending a great deal of time doing with the best of experts. If they didn't meet the needs of the community, we listened to them, and over the seven months, we evaluated them, and they didn't do what we needed them to do. And so I, I say, we are committed to this process that goes into the history, the master plan, the redevelopment plan, and how we make it work for the community economically, housing, and the multi-use aspect of it. And so, yes, I am in favor of employing the, or engaging the use of our most expert residents in Summit in a controlled way, because we do not want, we, we do want the best deal for Summit. And we know how the design aspect of it has been hashed out. People in this room have said competing things. So Residents for Summit, I think it's very interesting that you think you speak for all of Summit. I think that's very interesting. So clearly, your elected officials are holding that role and doing what we've been elected to do. And this, this committee is another opportunity for us to take advantage of financial expertise that will make this project better. This is something that Summit prides itself on. Mrs. Cooper, I applaud your service in the past, and I welcome your engagement, and only hope that when I'm 89, I can contribute as you did. That is what this council has wanted, community engagement. And I have to say, sometimes we're feeling like the tone deafness is coming from people who think they speak for everyone, and you don't.
Council President, I'm sorry, I just want to respond, because I completely hear what you're saying. I guess what I'm saying is, is could we, hearing from people who've done this work, and even Vicky, Mrs. Liederman's example, that design is a big part of it. My question is, could we expand it to include those people, not, not put together a, because I believe we should have an advisory committee. I believe this is, the financial advisory committee is absolutely the right direction, that's my opinion. What I'm hearing tonight that, is that the designing piece of it is hand-in-hand, because we are changing the project. The project's going to be smaller, it's going to change in scope, it's going to be different buildings. So I guess it just made me think, when I hear from people who are in that area, that work in it, maybe, I don't know, should we, should we expand it? And if we cannot do that tonight, I'm not against having a financial advisory committee, I just want to make sure the right voices are heard. And I believe that our committees, the city committees are important, but I also think that it's clear to me tonight that the design component has its importance. So I don't want to stop progress, but I also hear that that's part of the progress process when you are changing the size of the development. And I'm just trying to make sure that we're covering our bases, and that if it's something that's important, that we just contemplate it. And that's why I think it's important that I'm asking this question of the council, because we can't normally have these conversations otherwise.
Councilmember Vartan, did you have something to say?
Yeah, so just for one minute, the three main reasons to redevelop are that it's in the master plan. The city's finances necessitate it, and we have an affordable housing obligation. Those are the three reasons that necessitate redevelopment. We have an obligation to utilize the opportunity here. It is on us that we did not effectively communicate about why this is important. Because this has been going on for many years, we can't have expected people to pay attention the whole time, that's okay. It has been a process where we present small pieces at a time, and that can be very frustrating, because we're not showing all the details. And then, and then the plan kept changing, right? So it doesn't make sense to send a mailer about a plan that keeps changing, right? We couldn't do that every single time, it costs money to do that. So that's, that's on us. However, after the meetings in June, we spent the summer, I thought, building consensus around, first, directing the developers to come back with a plan that complies with the redevelopment plan. Then, second, to outline a way to get community expertise more involved in the process. And then, third, to work on outlining for the community what the process going forward would look like, and how we will further engage the community in this committee and in other committees and in just individual people, right? So we spoke about this, more than once, about this resolution. I think it would be extremely disappointing now to have what I thought was a consensus among all of us about this, this committee being a good thing to do. But it's up to everyone to justify how they will vote, but it makes it very difficult, I think, if it seems like we have, we have these discussions and we come up with something, and then, you know, the, there's a different concern all of a sudden, right as we're about to do something. So for me, I'm telling you, the reasons why- So for me, I'm telling you, the reasons why I think this is the right thing to do, which is, I would like for this committee to provide advice to us about the details of the deal. And we will engage with other commissions and we'll engage with other individual people. That's why I'm going to be supporting this and I think everybody else has to justify it for themselves. Thank you.
I just would like to respond to that. I apologize. I think this is important deliberation and I, we're an elected body. So you're right, we've had, we've had these discussions. And when we have these discussions in closed session, we are fighting out ideas. So people should know that. In closed sessions, we fight out ideas. We're not just here to, you know, to be, let the ink dry and we're all one voice. So we're elected officials. I, I, we're sitting in front of a room full of people that bring up things that don't come up necessarily in our closed sessions. So I'm not here to divide up the group. I'm not here to not live up to my word and have consensus. I'm trying to say, people are coming to council. Part of our job is when they come to council, we listen because we don't, we shouldn't be expected to know everything. So I, I just heard some concerns tonight that as an elected official, as somebody who represents others, I think it's fair to say, let's have a conversation amongst this dais. That's all I was asking. So I just want to say that, however I vote tonight, it's not because I'm not here in goodwill or good faith with this, with this council. We're seven people and there's 22,000 people in our town. And I'm just trying to understand what the best course of action is and if we could tweak it. And I know it's not always that easy because it's built in with resolutions. I just wanted to ask the question because I feel like that's our job, to ask the question so that when I vote, I know, I may not vote all the way that they want or you. I'm just trying to make the right decision. So I just needed to say that because I'm not here to be a barb in your side.
Uh, Councilmember Allen, I think that what I would recommend is that we, you know, there is no reason that we can't start with the Financial Committee and we can have a discussion about whether it makes sense to create an additional committee because I don't see them all sitting in one room together. It's going to be probably more of a back and forth with, if, if we had another committee anyway. So I, you know, I would say, let's get this started because otherwise we lose another two weeks. It's going to take us, you know, two weeks to get the applications and another two weeks to process them and get the resolution out. So I would say, let's, there's nothing to stop us from getting that part done. And then we can have a discussion whether it makes sense to have a different committee as well. And that would be my recommendation. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. And I would just say, to me, this, this resolution tonight is just the next logical step. I, I do think there is time for further discussion on what you're just saying. But let's go back to May of 2021 when we unveiled the whole project, Sub District Two, Sub District Three, and then Sub District One. We have listened and we have been listening all that time. And not only just listening with tone deaf, we've acted. Look at where the project is now to when it was first unveiled. Look how much smaller it's gotten. And it's two buildings, we're talking two buildings, two four-story buildings. When it was unveiled, when we unveiled Sub District Three in February of 2022 this year, it was one five-story building and most people got up that night at the microphone and said, how about a pass-through?
Did we read a public comment earlier?
Uh-huh.
It's, it's, that's what we've been discussing. It is, that the architects are still working on it. No, he hasn't.
No, we actually have not seen a drawing of it. It's just a conceptual discussion.
It's conceptual discussions.
So, but my point to you, my point to you is, if we're not, you're saying we're just, we're listening, but we're not doing anything. We're, we're acting. Look where the project has evolved from, to, from May of 2021 to now. So, but I think tonight is the next logical step in the process and I'm going to vote in favor of this resolution.
Okay, all right, let's, we need to wrap this up. Come on up.
Mary Farrell, 117 Beekman Road. I did not prepare to speak tonight, but just listening to everything here, you're trying to build a team and a team has other different offense, defense. There's other players in it. It's not just one entity. It's not just the financial. It makes sense, if you want to make this project move along, to have a diversified team instead of having a financial team and a design team. It doesn't make sense to work in a silo like that. That's not how the world works. It, it seems to my uneducated point of view to build a team and have that. If, if you're worried about a vote tonight and that everybody came in here deciding how they were going to vote and now you're changing that, why can't you just do an amendment to the resolution instead of waiting two weeks and then have another resolution?
Because I think there's more stuff, more information that needs to be discussed before we can amend a resolution because we spent a lot of time talking about what.
There's been a lot of time dedicated to this. You've done three years for the redevelopment. That was during a pandemic. You've done it from January of this year and now till September. That's nine months. There's a lot of time invested in this and it's all volunteer time. But it just seems like you're delaying it on silly, you don't want to put the square peg in a round hole and you're not allowing the process to evolve. That's my point of view.
Thank you for your comment. All right, are there any other comments? All right, so with that, we're going to take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any post?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries and we will have a discussion about what to do with this other proposal. Okay, so let's go on to Finance Number One, Councilmember Bartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 9882. This resolution opposes the proposed rate increases to the State Health Benefits Program, or SHBP. The program offers medical, prescription drug, and dental coverage. For some more background, the plans are self-funded. The State Division of Pension and Benefits is responsible for the activities of the SHBP and the State Health Benefits Commission is an executive organization responsible for overseeing the SHBP. The proposed rate increase for 2023 is 22.8%, which is just exorbitantly high. So this resolution does three things. First, call on the State Health Benefits Commission to reconsider the rate increase and strike a rate increase that's lower. Second, urge the state legislature to adopt legislation expanding the composition of the commission to include representatives from municipal and county government. And third, a copy of the resolution we're voting on be forwarded to the, to Governor Murphy, the State Treasurer, and our District 21 representatives in the Assembly and the Senate. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I enthusiastically endorse, or second, this resolution.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? Okay, motion carries. I'm going to suggest that since there are some members from Grace here waiting to hear for an ordinance, a resolution about Grace, let's move that one up. So Administrative Policies Number One is, it's getting late.
Yeah, thank you, Council President.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll do that and then we'll go back to the rest of the agenda.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would like to introduce Resolution Number 9795, which authorizes the execution of an MOU between the city and Grace. Many of you know the nonprofit organization Grace, which is giving and receiving assistance for our community essentials, was formed in 2016 to help local families in need by supplying, supplying fresh food, toiletries, and household goods. The city permits Grace to store food and non-perishable items at both Cornog Fieldhouse and the Community Center as well as providing the space to hold weekly food distributions and other social service programs on city property. During COVID, Grace became a lifeline for many families and individuals in need and the city proudly continues their relationship with this nonprofit. Because of Grace's nonprofit status and expanding services, this memorandum of, of understanding with Grace helps further delineate the role and responsibilities between the two entities. The resolution outlines all of the responsibilities, but a few of the noteworthy changes are Grace and the vendors that they, they work with are just required to obtain and provide proof of insurance. City vehicles should not be used for picking up or dropping off food or other supplies for distribution. And the common council will designate a council liaison to serve as a contact person for Grace. And the meeting, I didn't open the ordinance.
That's not an ordinance. It's a resolution.
Oh, it's a res, I didn't ask for a second.
You can do that right now.
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay.
And then once you finish.
All right, yeah. Sorry.
Just finish your, finish your talk and then we'll give you a second.
The common council will designate a council liaison to serve as a contact person for Grace and to attend meetings of Grace's Board of Trustees. Council President, I ask to approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, so now, no, you did it fine. So now we're going to take comments from members of council first. Anyone have anything they'd like to say about this?
I know, I did a long introduction, but I just want to thank you for all the work that you, through Council President, that all the work that you've done in this community. You have been a lifeline. I've met a few people, you know, I volunteered at Bridges the other day and your name was on the tip of their tongue. So thank you for the work you do and I just wanted to say that.
Any other comments from members of council?
And I, I just, you know, again, I second that. Thank you very much for all the hard work. And anyone who's listening out there, Grace is having a gala and a fundraiser and even if you can't attend the fundraiser, you know, they always need our support, not just our heartfelt thanks, but also our financial support.
Right. I understand that the numbers are, are very high in terms of who you're serving, that they're still kind of at a high point. So that, you know, some of us may be thinking that the pandemic is over and, you know, things are back to normal, but they're not. So there's inflation and, you know, there's still a lot of people in need. So I encourage folks to support Grace. So with that, are there any comments from members of public? Would you like to speak? Okay, come on up.
I'm Amanda Parrish Block. I reside at 13 DeBarry Place in Summit. Mayor Rades, City Council, City of Summit, for those who are still watching, thank you for your support of Grace these past several years. From the day we moved into the Cornog Fieldhouse and our first distribution with the mayor and some of the city council people as volunteers to this very past week, it's been an inspiring and sustaining collaboration. Thanks to the support of the Department of Community Programs, we have been in a place that could feasibly up-level our operations during the unimaginable six weeks of March to mid-April 2020, when we grew from serving 100 households to 524 households per week. This was while offering double the food, double the supplies to help families shelter in place. During that time, we were able to launch deliveries to the Summit Housing Authority residences and throughout Summit. We would not have been able to attain and sustain the logistical and physical feats necessary to meet demand if it were not for the Department of Community Programs. With you, the decision-makers, the leaders of our city, together we fostered systemic empathy. We moved from charity to justice together. Demand is higher now than it ever was in 2020. For the past seven weeks, we served more than 500 households per week. More than 85% of our 500-plus families reside in Summit. This means that's about 10% of Summit's total population who rely on us for food and supplies every week. The remainder work worship or related to the Summit community. Our generous and compassionate community have ensured that no child will go hungry, that our seniors will live their golden years in dignity, and that our neighbors will remain our neighbors. We're grateful to remain at Cornog. We're grateful for all the ways you've supported us thus far. And with its graduation from your transport and your insurance, we turn to the greater community of the City of Summit for their commitment to see us through these times of high need and high demand. And I want to reiterate, please come, please volunteer, even if you just want to stop by and ask questions, to come and get to know our people more. We welcome that. We welcome you and we thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Block. Are there any other comments from members of the public?
All right, this is the last time I promise. So I want to thank Amanda for being here. As a board member of Grace as well, I'm a volunteer. I also give my time by providing the dental services for Grace and all the members here in Summit with the nonprofit Kinder Smile. And I want to say that Grace doesn't just provide food services. We provide a lot more for the people here in Summit, for those on council who don't know, from medical to dental to other assistance. So for all of you who have not been to Grace, I, I welcome you to come and see. It's, there's so many people here within the city that need our help. And, and for all of you at home, volunteer your time. Like the mayor has said, you know, be on EMS or, you know, sign up for a board or a committee or just volunteer your time somewhere because people like Amanda, who spend countless hours every week, every single day, trying to help people here in town, you know, it's welcoming. So thank you to Amanda. She really deserves a lot.
Are there any other comments? Comments from members of council? Okay, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to go back to the finance agenda. We'll start with Finance Number Two. Councilmember Bartan, we're jumping around a little.
Oh, yeah, keeping me on my toes. Thank you, Council President. This is 9872. This resolution authorizes the issuance of a bond anticipation note in the amount of $1,476,000. As you'll recall, we recently held a bond sale for permanent financing of various capital projects over the last several years. The current outstanding note is related to Ordinance 19-3192, was, which was not included because this would have been a taxable bond unlike the others. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
Peter Kane, 3 Iris Road. Is this in reference to the Seven Cedar Street Building?
Yes, it is.
So has the contract for Seven Cedar already been completed? Has it finalized?
The contract for sale, yeah, 2019.
So it was contracted for sale and how was it paid for if you're issuing a bond today for the exact amount of the purchase price?
I'm going to tell us.
It's a short-term note. It's the same financing mechanism.
So how was the, how was the purchase financed if it's closed?
Through a short-term note. You do it every 12 months.
So, so the Cedar Street purchase was, has closed. We own it and it was through a short-term note. And this is to replace the short-term note with non-taxable bond authorization.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's just another short-term.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call, roll call. Sorry. I forgot. Yes, we shall.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Bartan?
Aye.
Preston Fox?
Aye. I don't even have a note.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to Finance Number Three.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9471. This resolution authorizes renewal of membership in the suburban municipal joint insurance fund. Membership allows the city to be part of a joint risk pool, thus offering lower insurance rates. The resolution renews Summit's membership for three years until December 31st, 2025. This is one of the best examples of shared services and it's a no-brainer. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the last Finance Resolution, Number Four.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9862. This resolution authorizes a contract for financial consulting services related to Broad Street West to Acacia Financial Group Incorporated of Mount Laurel, New Jersey, not to exceed $50,000. Acacia and the managing director with whom we'll be working most closely are extremely well-versed in both Summit's financial situation, having worked with us before, and the redevelopment process generally. They have assisted dozens of other municipalities, big and small, through the redevelopment process. They are experts in pro forma modeling, option analysis, risk assessment, budget and tax impact, negotiations, document review, and plan of finance development and transaction execution. This financial advisor was chosen by this council but will be paid through the developer's escrow account. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
Peter Kane, 3 Iris Road. So just to be clear, so this is only for Acadia, correct?
Yeah.
Acacia.
Acacia, excuse me. Not, not, none of this is for Topology or any other vendor?
No, correct.
And so we're authorizing the agreement, but the funds will be paid entirely through the developer's fund, correct? So no. So, no out of pocket?
Yes, we have an escrow within the developer case.
Okay, as you have for others, I, no, I'm, I'm aware. Just point of order, madam president, why for number five was there a voice vote instead of a roll call vote?
Because there's no reason to have a roll call vote on it. We had a roll call vote on the bond issuance because something, a financial...
Is that, is that chair's decision on a voice vote or a roll call vote?
No.
That's, that's legal.
But any member can call for a roll call vote, correct?
So, what they do is they say all affirmative.
But any member can call for a roll call vote, correct? On any resolution, on anything the board?
The chair, the chair correct, runs the meeting and the chair calls on whether it's a vote, voice vote or a roll call vote. And as you notice, like, when they do an ordinance, that's, ordinances are all roll call votes.
But, again, as you all know, I love to quote my Robert's Rules. And I'm pretty sure that Robert's Rules allows any member of the body to call for a roll call vote on any resolution. And the chair can overrule that.
But you have to understand, you have to read Robert's Rules in conjunction with the bylaws of the city. The bylaws of the city and the bylaws of this common council are what controls this common council. And when those bylaws don't speak, then you go to Robert's Rules. So, the bylaws rest the authority with the chair on how to do it. And legally, there are votes that require roll call and there are votes that require a consensus vote. It's a voice vote. So, what you do have is the, the, the votes are all the affirmative, the clerk takes down the affirmative votes, the no votes, the, the extensions.
Were there any no votes on number five? It wasn't clear to me if there were any no votes.
No.
There was no, there were all ayes, okay. It was unclear to us. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, wait, that was, that was number four, okay, so...
So, you're done with me? Congratulations. Oh, we gotta vote, yeah.
We haven't voted, yeah, go ahead.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
His question was very specific about number five.
Yes.
The Broad Street Committee?
If there were any nays on that.
There were none.
There were none.
Okay. It was unanimous.
No.
No, I voted aye.
She voted aye.
She voted aye.
Oh.
I remember hearing that.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, Mr. McGoy, what is it?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So, the role of Acacia?
Acacia.
What exactly do they do for us?
Currently?
No, what will they do for us?
Would you like to take that one?
Yeah, I can take that one. So, essentially, they'll, what we envision the role will be similar to what sort of Dr. Powell, who played, you know, that role as, as a financial advisor. They're taking, you know, you start with, with the developers' performers and when they're presenting that, ultimately, that gets, you know, goes through the financial advisor and they're putting it into whatever financial format that they use. You're sitting down, you're, they're kind of guiding those discussions through the planner and myself, other elected officials, what we see that, how we would work that with the new financial real estate advisory committee. They're gonna be sitting there, sort of, here's what the developers have presented and then here's, here's this material that we have. I think one point that we missed in all this discussion around the real estate advisory committee was, we needed to structure a legal, sort of, actual advisory committee instead of just doing this sort of sub, like, working group that we've done in the past because of the sensitivity of the work product that we would be dealing. So, that was like one thing that I think kind of got overlooked. They will be working with this advisory committee and they're certainly going to be advising the council on that role, but it's also running these performers and really just like their own analysis of how they look at this. That's one of their roles, I mean, there's...
So, they have no role in the negotiations?
It, it is, they're there, certainly asking questions of the developers as well as we will be, so there's always like, it's not just them, it's gonna be more than what it was with, how we previously had it. We had, there's the planners ourselves as well as the steering committee that were sitting with the developers with that. You know, they had some, Dr. Powell had some interaction by himself, that, there were certainly discussions at times when they were having that similar role with the financial advisor, but I think this is gonna be a little more robust discussion going on with how, how we're gonna proceed. So, that's what I think, I think it's gonna be different. Kevin, I, I think we're, we're just gonna have to operate a little differently with, with this.
I, I, I'm just assuming that these people serve a role, sort of like an investment banker issuing a fairness opinion?
That's right.
Right. And just so you know, I've never seen an investment bank not issue a fairness opinion for you.
So, I, look, I...
I just want you guys to understand that it's, these are, you know, I don't want to trivialize that, you know, I'm just saying that, like, they're, they're not gonna raise a lot of objections.
So, I don't want to characterize that and I don't, and I'm sorry to interrupt and Council President, I... I, I think we created this and I think you kind of spoke to this before and, and how we got to this place. And I think this was set up at first and, and I think the Council President has, has, I think, intimated to everyone that I think there is certainly a possibility for opening it up too and there's, design is certainly parallel. I, I see them hand in hand. I, I agree with a lot of what the public was saying. The financial component of this, because you're dealing with deal terms, a little bit more, had to create this sort of legal aspect to it, which was created by this advisory committee. This isn't gonna be a rubber stamp, but we expect that people from this community that are volunteering services who are, who are competent, you'll apply, we expect that and we want this to be a critical analysis. And we want to get to a point where that this committee can make a recommendation along with our financial advisor and our professionals to this council. That, that is the, at least in my mind, where we want to get to and I welcome that.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands and I think you're kind of saying it, you're not gonna be able to rely on these people to get you a deal that's in the best interest of Summit. That's not their role.
Through you, Council President, may I respond?
Yeah, sure.
I think what, how I understood and we talked about this in Finance Committee, it's very similar to, is Susan Bowen still here?
Yep, she's right here.
You stood up? Yes. You were very, very helpful in talking about the engagement that goes on in a redevelopment deal. And I imagined Acacia serving that role in terms of, you talked about the, you talked about how they, you would have a...
Sensitivity analysis.
A sensitivity analysis. And this is where we would say, throw these numbers back. I heard that would be the engagement that this...
That's how you negotiate something like this with Paul Brown.
Ms. Bowen?
Sorry, I, I, I didn't mean to engage you, I just meant to respond to what that, how I heard this additional company. So, I, I really, I'm sorry, Ms. Bowen, I didn't mean to engage you, but it was very helpful in how we would employ them.
But just, just you on that.
I just want to make one, one point. They're, they're a little different than an investment banker just giving a, that opinion. This firm that you guys are hiring has a fiduciary duty to the council and its advisory committee. They're giving you league, they're giving you financial advice.
So did Powell, right?
Well, I can't, sir, I...
No, I pointed that out.
Yeah, I know, I went to law school for a reason, I wasn't that good at math, so that's why I'm not giving any financial advice. But my point is, is that they're not just giving, it's not like they're giving an independent opinion, they're actually gonna be the council and this committee's expert to work with the other experts to come up to do it, this, Ms. Bowman? Bowen indicated, to, to test it and see what's best. So, they do, really do have a fiduciary duty to this body, even though they're being paid through an escrow.
Now, I, I, I understand that, I'm just saying that, like, so what they're going to do, to be clear about what an investment bank does in situations who get paid a lot more than these guys, they have, they'll have a calculator and then you put the inputs in. There's, there's no rigorous due diligence on those inputs, the inputs are gonna come from the developer and they're gonna put those in and then you can stress-test them, but the, the ingredients are not come, they don't come up with those. I'm just saying, just...
I'm gonna push back on that because the, Bob Powell did push back on...
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot to this and I think you'll find out when, you know, if you're, if you're one of those, I think you're gonna realize that this is...
But we didn't take, we did not take what the developers gave us in terms of the numbers as, as, you know, as gospel. If they said it was a 4% loan, we might say, no, we don't think it is, you know, so there was pushback on those things and our advisors did, did, you know, help us on that. So, let's just let the process happen and you'll understand.
I'm just trying to set expectations and I hope you guys don't put too much in that because...
Don't worry about it. But with some of us, we're sitting at the table and we actually know what did happen. So, you know, setting expectations, you know, for something you haven't actually sat through.
Well, then why is Powell gone?
Okay, come on.
No, I'm just saying that, like, you're...
Listen, through you, Council President, can I, guys, hold on.
We're off topic.
We're not gonna talk about another professional, that would be inappropriate for this council. If they made a decision to go in a different direction, that's the decision they made, but we're not gonna denigrate him or, or say why, or why not he's no longer with us.
It's not really the professional, I just, I just, I don't want, I'm, what, what worries me is there was so much faith put into professionals and I said it in the very beginning, when I first spoke with you in the beginning of March, that you need to question them, I didn't think they were giving you good advice. And we're still working with Topology, who I think has done a terrible job. But I just don't want the same thing repeated. We bring somebody else in, I don't know where these guys come from, I don't know why we didn't hire them before, why we hired Powell, I'm not getting into all that. Just please, don't go and just assume that they're going to do all this work for you. I think we've already experienced that, so.
And that's why the, the financial advisory committee will have comp, help right there to, because we don't want to rely just on professionals, we want to rely on our resident experts as well. Okay, Ms. Bowen, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have just very quick comment or question.
Sure.
Can you tell us, in the scope of work for Acacia, what they said they're going to provide us? Are they gonna provide us a report or are they gonna provide us advice? Or are they gonna provide us a summary of some kind of their findings? Because that's sort of how these things work.
Right.
Yes, through, through you, Council President.
Yes.
Right, there's, if you look at the council packet, there's 35, I think, pages.
It's a lot.
From Acacia that are related to this resolution, so they provide...
Usually, there's something called a scope of work that says...
Yes, yeah, it's in there, that's what, I'm getting, I'm getting there, yeah. So, that's all, that's all in there. There's gonna be, there's gonna be a report on their findings, they've, they've, I, I don't want to misspeak and say, and, and leave something out. So, I'll, I'll let, if you want to send me an email, I can show you the spot in the packet where the scope of work is. Because I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, misspeak right now. So, shoot me an email, I'll send you the spot in the, in the agenda packet where it's located and then we can, we can chat about it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Because that really illustrates how these things work, because that's the other thing you can do, at the end, you can say, okay, you said, where's your part three of your scope of work, where is it? And then they have to produce it because they've said 17,500, something like that, that they're gonna produce it, so they have to produce it. Whether it costs them 50,000 or 17,500, they have to produce it. So, it just gets important to really, really look at the scope of work and make sure you understand it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're now moving on to safety and health. Wait, we haven't voted, we have to vote. It's getting late. Come on up. Delia Hamlet, so it was 335 pages tonight, but can you just tell me, or can I have a better understanding, sorry, Council President, what do they currently do for us now, the financial team?
They do debt assessment primarily, right, Michael? Yeah, it's all, it's when we do any type of financial, mainly in our capital side of the budget, so they're providing financial assistance for the city to go out to market for debt issuances, you know, short-term, long-term. Financial advisement on anything else related and certainly any conversations that we have through our CFO, with our auditors and so forth, they're a part of that financial team.
Understood.
So, that's kind of what they're, how they're acting and have been since 2006.
Understood, okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments, members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we can go on to safety and health. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. I am happy to introduce these two resolutions, which follow resolutions that we passed over the summer that where we declared vacancies in the police department subsequent to the retirement announcement of Lieutenant Richel. We declared vacancies for a lieutenant position, a sergeant position, and a officer position. And I'm happy to announce that we are ready to fill both the sergeant position and the officer position. So, the first resolution is to appoint the promotion of one of our officers to the sergeant position, that's Brian, I'm sorry, I'm pulling up the, it's been a long night. I'm pulling up the closed session agenda to get the name correct.
It's Officer Worthman. Brian Worthman.
Yes, thank you. To this position, I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries and that's swearing in, may I rate us for Thursday? Thursday morning. Okay, and for the next officer as well. Yes. Yes, okay, so let's go on to, to resolution number two.
Thank you, Council President. The second safety and health resolution is to appoint a police officer position and I am, I'm happy to announce that we have an excellent candidate for our new police officer, it's Edwin Geddon and he, I believe he will also be sworn in this week, but I just wanted to note that we went through the interviews, we have had excellent candidates across the board, it was very difficult to choose and he was really outstanding. So, I think we are all very lucky that he will be joining the Summit Police Department and I'm sure he will have great success, so I'm happy to ask that we approve this resolution as well.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're now moving on to law and labor, number one. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I'm introducing resolution number 9813 to authorize the serving of alcoholic beverages at the art gala event at City Hall by Friends of the Summit Public Art. And we are going to be granting them permission to serve champagne and wine during the spectacular art gala that will be taking place on Saturday, September 17th, with the rain date of Sunday, September 18th. It will happen from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And the Friends of Summit Public Art will provide us an insurance certificate naming the Summit, City of Summit as an additionally insured. And the Friends of Summit Public Art shall also obtain the required state-issued social affairs permit for this event. And they will be abiding by all state regulations pertaining to the serving of alcoholic beverages in conjunction with this event. And so, I offer this resolution for approval.
Can I second it?
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to law and labor, number two.
Thank you, Council President. I introduce Resolution Number 9869 to authorize sick leave with pay for a Department of Community Services employee who is in the Division of Public Works and this employee will be out through November 30th, 2022.
I second.
Okay, yeah. All right, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One more law and labor, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. This last Resolution, Number 9866, is to authorize sick leave with pay for a fire department employee who will be out through December 12th. I actually think I got those dates mixed up. I apologize. I mixed those dates up. So our, our firemen will be out November 30th, 2022 and our community services employee will be out December 12th, 2022. And so I make that correction and I offer Resolution 9866 for approval.
Second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We're on to Administrative Policies and Community Services, Number Two. Councilmember Allen.
Yep, thank you, Council President. I'm introducing Resolution Number 9812, which seeks to appoint Justin Kademi as a historical preservation commissioner member. Mr. Kademi is currently a student at Rutgers in the Honors College studying American government, law and politics. His background includes interning for the Westfield Historical Society where he researched, identified and described historical sites ranging from homes, public buildings and landscapes and his works, work includes the Reeves House and the Miller Cory House Museum. The role of an HPC member is to look at renovation plans, potentially visit the site of Summit Homes under renovation, discuss building materials and recommending if a current home design fits within the context and character of that particular neighborhood. While it's not required to understand all of these aspects, Justin's specific experience speaks to this position. I've spoken with Mr. Kademi and importantly, I've also spoken at great length with Mr. Riji, who is a key member of the HPC. I was liaison last year. I know that we have struggled to get volunteers for that board and he said that they are getting the work done, but they're short on help. So he is, he said he would love to get this approved soon. So the people are, that are currently on the board picking up the workload for those who we need to appoint. So hopefully if anyone else is out there, there's another spot. Therefore, I'm going to ask to approve this resolution, but I want to approve this resolution. Sorry.
Okay, so, oh, and I'm going to second it and I'll, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Can I make a comment?
Aye.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I forgot, we're making comments.
Thank you, just very quickly, I, thank you, Council President. I know Justin to be a very bright student, extremely dedicated volunteer and proud Summit resident. He's experienced and very excited to get started, the liaison to the HPC this year. The Chair and Vice Chair are eager for new members, so I'm thankful for his willingness to donate his time. And there, as my colleague mentioned, there is another vacancy and it would be great if there was an architect who is interested. So I'm plugging that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? I forgot about that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions?
I abstain.
Okay. So the motion carries and let's move on now to Capital Projects, Councilmember O'Sullivan. Would you like to get started?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9855 to authorize the national cooperative purchase Sourcewell for a snow tractor with plow for $52,847.30. During the 2022 capital budget process, council approved funding for the replacement of a snow tractor with a plow to assist the Division of Public Works during snow removal operations. The tractor will be a 2022 Ventrak tractor KN4520Z Kubota to replace the 2004 model that is currently in the DPW equipment inventory. This new vehicle will be used primarily as a sidewalk snow plow to support roadway snow removal operations. The tractor will be purchased from Store Tractor Company in Branchburg, New Jersey for $52,847.30 through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract, which saves the city 25% off the list price. I move this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Cap Number Two.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9477 to award the bid for the Beacon Road Improvement Project for Midwest Construction of Warren, New Jersey was the lowest responsible bidder among the six bids received by the city for the Beacon Road Improvement Project. Midwest Construction has completed other projects to the city's satisfaction over the last 10 years, most recently the cul-de-sac project that was approved at the April 19th council meeting. The scope of this project will include drainage upgrades, road regrading, curb installation and the milling and paving of the entire length of Beacon Road. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to Capital Projects, Number Three.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9802 to authorize agreement with County of Union for installation of permanent dog park at the transfer station. We have been waiting very patiently for the county to give us the permission to install a permanent dog park at the transfer station. I attended the July 14th Union County Meeting in Elizabeth to press our commissioners to move this project forward. There are many people to thank, but we owe a debt of gratitude to Councilman Matt Gould. This was one of his many initiatives that he was passionate about. His family should be so proud for all he did for our city. Some hurdles remain before the dog park will open, one of which is fencing. The city is currently receiving bids for a six-foot tall fence that will surround the park. Once the dog park is open, it will have the exact same hours as the transfer station. I enthusiastically move to adopt this resolution.
I very enthusiastically second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
I just want to say I enthusiastically look forward to voting for this. My neighbors have asked about this and this is such good news for.
Yeah, I think there are going to be a lot of happy dog owners in town. I'm just sorry that it's 11 o'clock at night and folks didn't get to hear this, so. Okay, so any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Cap Five.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9804 to appoint a part-time plumbing and mechanical subcode official. As we discussed in the closed session, we will be hiring Raymond Keely to be the part-time, to the part-time position of plumbing mechanical subcode official and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, Number Five.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9816 to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works Roads Unit for a driver. As we discussed in the closed session, DCS is declaring a vacancy for a driver in the roads unit because of a recent resignation and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Right, any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we have one more. Capital Projects, Number Six.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9847 to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Arts Committee. And as we discussed in the closed session as well, Lauren Holt has been appointed by the mayor to the Arts Committee for a three-year term. She is highly qualified and will be a great addition and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to Community Programs and Parking Services, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9867 and this resolution extends the current Park Mobile contract to December 31st, 2022. This contract extension, which came about as a result of hard work and negotiation by Rita McNanny, Director of Parking Services, allows for the deferment of a modest increase in the fees charged by Park Mobile, an increase of five cents initially from 25 to 35, sorry, excuse me, 25 to 30 cents this year in both 2023 and 2024. Because of Rita's hard work, even with these increases, Summit remains among the municipalities with the lowest fees through Park Mobile. I move that we adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to remind everybody that we had, we passed on this fee to the end user because from 2013 through 2020, the City of Summit paid over $550,000 in transaction fees with the peak in 2019, which was $124,680. And that fee structure was just no longer sustainable for the city and I applaud Rita for negotiating hard for a lower rate for our residents. But most of, a lot of these people are from out of town that are paying that we were subsidizing, so it just made sense for us to pass it on.
Okay, are there any other comments?
Very quickly, you know, every town around us has different charges. A town that borders us has a 40 cents already convenience fee. So, you know, I think they basically called everybody and said, we're doing this 10 cents increase and Rita was like, no, you're not, you know. So again, thanks to her for her fierce advocacy and, you know, just to remind her again, there's no convenience fee at all if you pay at the kiosk. So the app is great, but it's a convenience that you have to pay a little bit more for. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Comments from public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we have one last Community Programs and Parking Services Resolution. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9861 and this resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Bureau of Recreation Opportunities for Individuals with Disabilities. This application requesting $18,000 in grant funding would be a continuation of funding the city has received annually since 2010, making possible the special needs programs within the Department of Community Programs.